All right, welcome everybody. Thank you for coming to our meeting tonight. It is about 7:01 PM and this is the Boxborough Select Board meeting on October 27th, 2025. Now, as is our custom, we always start with the Pledge of Allegiance, so if you care to join us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, we have quite a bit to get done today. Let's see, we will get our appointment done. Our public hearing is scheduled for 7:05, so we've got a couple of minutes. Andrew Tavolaki, are you on Zoom? Are you here? I don't see Andrew.
Mark raises his hand.
Oh, Mark, I'll get you with public com-- well, you're doing public input after the hearing.
I think he's on for the ZBIA too.
Oh, are you on for ZBIA? Oh, oh, you're on for Andrew. Okay. Well, let's, let's ta-- can you unmute him?
Yeah, thank you.
I wasn't sure why you were here.
I don't know if Andrew is here or not, so I wanted to just inform the Select Board that I've spoken to Andrew.
Uh huh.
And Andrew has, I explained to him what the responsibilities of the zoning appeals board is, and he is amicable and willing to do it, and I can certify that he is a resident of Boxborough, so he qualifies. So, I hope you appoint him, and that's all I have to say. And I don't know if he's here either, I just don't know if anyone informed him that this was going to happen, so.
Yeah, no, we don't see him. Yeah, no, we don't see him. Mark, thanks very much. We really appreciate your endorsement.
Yeah. No, Andrew volunteers on another, he has another volunteer hat that he wears. I actually think he's going to be a great addition to the zoning board, and thrilled that he raised his hand. So, already drew Strongarm, which one? Was it this or was it this?
Anyway.
Anyway, all right, well, I always ask people what they like about Boxborough, what, why we love Boxborough, and when Andrew's been here in the past, he has said all of the conservation land, the nature trails, and just the open space that he really enjoys. So, I spoke for him. All righty, let me just find my motions. What's up? I move to appoint Andrew Tavolaki as an alternate member to the zoning board of appeals for a term ending June 30th, 2028.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstained? All right, 3:00. How are we doing? I think we are.
No, you haven't.
Almost there. 7:03. All right, why don't we do minutes then? Why don't we just jump down to minutes? Everyone, did you guys have a chance to read the minutes from October 20th?
No, I did not.
Oh.
I did not see them.
Well, we could do it next.
If you give me, if you give me 90 seconds, oh, they're not here.
Beth, yeah, I didn't get them.
Okay, they're, they're online. Okay.
I think Kelly.
Well, they're in the packet, they're the very last. Okay, well, we just killed a minute, that's okay. What else can we do? Let's quick.
Do you have public participation at the town?
We, yeah, we have it after the hearing, because it's, you know, to give people some time, so otherwise we'd be rushing it. Yeah.
They'll comment on the hearing, but an issue that's not on your agenda.
Yes, that is, the hearing's at 7:05, and right after the pub, after the hearing is public input. Yes, yeah, we like to leave a chunk, just in case.
Close enough.
All right, close enough, that's right. All right. I move to open the public hearing at 7:05 PM to consider the application of Thinking Flower Coffee Shop Inc., located at 629 Massachusetts Avenue, Suite C, Boxborough, Mass. 01719, for an on-premise, all-alcoholic beverage packaged store license.
I second that.
So, would you like to tell us all about what you're up to?
Come on up. Grab a microphone.
You know, you can, you have to be on the mic.
You have to be on the mic, so you can bring the mic to your seat if you want.
Yeah, not everyone likes to stand. Do what's comfortable.
Whatever you're comfortable with. Pull the rights out, there you go.
So, if you could introduce yourself, believe it or not, quite a few people watch this, so tell us where you are, what you're up to, and why you're here tonight.
Hi there, I'm attorney Stefano Caprera, and--
I'm Divya, the owner of Thinking Flower, also the pastry chef.
And I'm here just in support of Divya. I assisted with preparation of the application that's before you. But essentially, the application is really to complement the type of offerings that are at the location as a bakery coffee concept, and really to expand the offerings past something that would traditionally be with a bakery at morning, early afternoon, and really try to expand that to more offerings.
Yes, if you want, if you want, can you talk about the hours too?
Well, why don't we let her?
Oh, okay.
Hold on a second. Why don't, why don't you tell us, for those who don't know, tell us about, about your storefront, and what you're going to be baking, and what your vision is, and how you plan to, you know, interact with the community? We'll start with that.
Okay, great.
So, Thinking Flower is a small-scale coffee shop and a bakery. We focus on making handcrafted croissants, cakes, coffee, specialty coffee sourced from a local coffee roaster in Acton. The vision for the shop is really just, I'm a pastry chef by profession, I'm truly passionate about making pastries. And I wanted to bring together the space where I can exercise my passion for pastries every single day. And the hours of operation, initially when we open, we're going to be open from Wednesday to Saturday. Wednesday through Friday will be open 7:30 to 3:00, Saturday I'll be open 8:00 to 5:00. Obviously, I'm looking to expand once I have a good team in hand and good support system. And it's got a little bit of French flair, a lot of good pastries, and I, I love making croissants, and I'm just excited to be the first bakery and the coffee shop in town.
Oh, super.
So, tell us about the liquor license. Why you need a liquor license?
Yes, I do get that asked.
People are probably wondering, what am I buying at 7:30 AM if I need a liquor license?
Well, I don't think I'll be serving alcohol at 7:30 in the morning, but I'm looking to start serving a glass of wine, maybe at 11:00 AM. So, I think the reason why I went for liquor license is, number one, the cost to establish food service is just so high, and I'd like to be open for longer hours in the day, and it's not enough if I'm not able to attract a broader range of customers. Nobody's looking to buy a cup of coffee after 2:00 or 3:00 PM. I mean, maybe yes, but just a very handful of people. Even if I'm open for longer hours, you know, I might not be making any business. It's just by offering liquor license, just by offering a glass of wine or a drink, I think it's just going to make the business more sustainable, and another place for locals to come in in the evening.
So, you're still planning on closing at 3:00?
On the weekdays, yes.
Okay, because originally we had heard you were going to close and then open up later in the day, so you've changed that model.
So, the plan is still there, I just, I'm not able to comment right now, because I don't have the right type of team to support the decision. So, I'm looking to hire more people once I have the liquor license in place, and then provided that I get the right support, I am looking to stay open for longer hours in the evening.
Oh, great, okay.
But for now.
And then, what type of liquor are you, would you be selling?
Predominantly wine. The reason I'm going for all alcohol permit is I'd love to have the option to serve mimosas on a Saturday with brunch, or espresso martinis, so.
So, it would be what they call hard alcohol, as well as?
Hard alcohol, like whiskey and scotch, no, maybe.
Okay.
Just cocktails, margaritas.
And it would be beer as well, or no?
There would be beer, yes. Wine and beer, for sure.
Okay.
It is for on-premises consumption?
On premises, yes.
So, you won't sell any wine for off-premises?
No, like, like a retail carryout option, no.
Yep.
This is for on-premises.
And I, and it's, this is probably a difficult question to ask, when, when CM asked about on-premise, are you talking enclosed in your building, or would you be allowing people to sit outside your storefront?
I do have outdoor seating, I have about five seating outdoor. So, if they want to carry their glass of wine, or they, they drink outside, but within the assigned area, they would be allowed to do it.
Yeah, they can't carry it.
Well, I--
Farther than the--
It's sidewalk, yeah. Well, that's what I wanted to make sure, that's what I wanted to make.
That's right, yeah.
The designated patio area is part of the application premises, so no alcohol beverage will leave the premises, and the premises is defined as including that patio area.
Great, I just wanted to make sure everybody knew that if they drove by and saw someone drinking a wine out, out on the patio or on the, that little, that was part of your application, that it was allowed.
Yeah, your application package was great, because actually the patio is shown in your lease and in your schematics, and I assumed that was the front, not the back.
That is the front, not the back, yes.
Well, that was the only problem I had with it. I'm like, well, which side is which parking lot, you know, because you go front to back, right?
Well, there's more parking in the back, so it might be confusing.
Exactly, that's why I was like, where's the patio? Okay, all right. No, but I did appreciate the thoroughness of that. I mean, your lease is in your schematics, you're, you know, everything is in there.
I'll give that off to Stefano for that, so he puts the back together.
I, I think it was, it's the best application I've seen in the three years I've been here, so, nicely done.
Yeah, you've done a great job.
And we're under quota, right?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah.
And then, the other question I just had, which was gone, oh, to enter your business, Kristin just kind of alluded to it. How, would people only be allowed in the front door? They wouldn't be allowed to come in through the back?
No, not the--
No, it's actually a storage in the back. That's how I figured it out, when I saw your storage.
Well, employees, we're still going to use the back door.
Yeah, of course.
But the customers, we're going to come, everybody's going to come through the front door.
Okay, great.
Yeah. Okay, so I have had a couple of questions from the public. One person wrote an email, which I'd like to read to you, so you have an opportunity to respond to it. And then, other people have come to me and said that they're very concerned about how you will compete with Two Friends Chocolate.
Okay.
And have you, have you had any conversations with, with that store owner, or have you worked? They're just concerned that they're also a new business, starting out, there is concern that Select Board and the EDC were encouraging competing businesses in the same plaza. I will tell you that my response to that is, well, this is America, and everybody has the right to open any kind of store that they want, as long as you're within the law, but, but there is a lot of community support that way. So, why don't we start with that, you know?
Yeah.
Do you see you competing with Two Friends Chocolate?
I don't believe so. Yes, we do have one common interest, that's selling coffee. She's predominantly a coffee, chocolate shop, and I don't make chocolates, I'm predominantly a bakery. The only common factor here is coffee, and honestly, so many facilities out there are selling coffee, like gas stations, offices, schools, I don't think we should be focusing on the fact that I have coffee, because it's become a common factor for so many businesses, and I--
You can get a free cup of Middlesex if you want, actually, so, yeah.
Yes, even they have coffee in the bank, that is very true. I honestly think just bakery being in the plaza is just going to probably bring in more foot traffic. All of us together can just benefit out of it. I don't think I'll be a direct competition to her, but I do understand how people can perceive it that way, which is very different in operation. I have indoor seating, I make, you know, croissants. My focus is more on baked goods than coffee. I have an extremely small coffee menu. So, I just want to say that we're two entirely different business models here. So, the only common factor is coffee, which I think we should all accept, that anybody should be able to sell coffee at this point.
All right, thank you. All right, now--
One quick question. The coffee and croissants that you sell, they, obviously, they can be consumed on-site. Can they take them to go-to?
Yes.
The coffee and the croissants?
Yes.
And all the bakery items, they would be able to get a coffee to-go?
Absolutely.
And a croissant to go to?
Yes.
As well as eating it on-site?
Yes.
Okay, great.
Great. Okay, now, we also did receive an email.
Okay.
So, I'm going to read it, and give you a chance to respond to it also. Dear members of the Select Board, as a longtime resident of Boxborough, I am ready to express my concern about the proposed alcohol license for Thinking Flower Coffee Shop located at 629 Mass Ave, Suite C. Boxborough is a small, family-oriented town known for its safety and community spirit. Many of us take daily walks with our children and pets, and students regularly walk to the library and school nearby. Introducing an establishment serving alcohol in this area raises concerns about maintaining the peaceful, safe environment we all value. Additionally, the proximities, the location's proximity to the highway makes it easy for non-residents to stop in and leave quickly, which may increase traffic and safety risks. Our neighborhood includes homes, schools, public library, fire departments, and the police, fire department and police department, all contributing to the small-town charm and sense of security that make Boxborough special. I respectfully urge the Select Board to consider these community safety concerns, and to preserve the family-friendly character of our town by denying this alcohol license request. So, I do want you to know that, that, that that is out there. Now, our police chief is here. John, can I put you on the spot? Do you have any thoughts about public safety with regard to having an establishment serving alcohol? You'll have to grab the mic.
Yeah.
And I do apologize, we, I only read this this afternoon myself. We only received it last night at 9:00.
Yeah, I don't have much of a comment. Obviously, it's a Select Board decision. I will say, we will work with the ABCC in terms of any, if there's any reports or underage drinking. They do do checks throughout the year at different liquor stores and establishments and restaurants. So, of course, we'll work in conjunction with them, and certainly any OUIs or anything like that, we will certainly ensure, just like we do at the other establishments in town. But as far as this individual location, really have, I don't want to say no comment, but it's certainly a Select Board decision, and we'll continue to, you know, enforce the OUI laws and work with the ABCC if there are any issues.
Great. Would you, okay, go ahead, sorry, can you go?
No, chief, we are, and we have two other establishments in town that are already serving alcohol in, in a restaurant, in a restaurant environment, correct?
Yes, we do.
And there hasn't been any flagrant violations of those two?
Not of those. The ABC, ABCC did do an operation a little while back with the liquor stores, and there were some, I believe, minor issues there that were attended to.
Yep, great.
Divya, do you want to talk about what, what training you've done with ABC, you know, how you do intend to manage if somebody's perhaps coming in intoxicated, or requesting perhaps more wine than they should be drinking? Help, help address this citizen's concern that this is going to cause, you know, a problem for the community.
I just want to start by saying that this is not a bar, by all means. This is going to be a bakery. I'm just adding a fun element to maybe pairing a dessert with wine. That's all there is to it. I don't think I'll, I'm looking to stay open until 8:00 AM, or, I mean, sorry, 8:00 PM or 9:00 PM, because I also have two kids that go to Blanchard. I'd love to be able to go back home and spend time with family. So, I think, just like the other two establishments in the town, if, if they serve alcohol too, we have Kraft Food Hall here, which is about the same distance from the exit, and then we have Oscar's Burrito. This is just mindfully selling alcohol, not like a bar that's just pouring, and then there's bar seating, and I'm open until late into the evening. And in terms of training, I'm predominantly a pastry chef. I just want to bring together this vision of being able to serve, you know, desserts and wine together. There's just really no other intention to it. And I'm going to have some rules in place to figure out when I can last serve a glass of alcohol before the store closes. If I'm closing at 5:00, I don't think I intend to serve my last drink at 5:00. So, maybe I'll serve an hour before closing. That's one of the things that I'm going to definitely put in place. And then, it's predominantly going to be wine, like I just want to say. It's not going to be hard liquor. And then, occasional cocktail, maybe I will, that's mostly going to be on the weekends, so.
Abby, you have your hand up.
Hi, thank you.
Abby Reeve, 205 Old Harvard Road. I am the chair of the Boxborough Economic Development Committee.
And our committee also, Divya had applied for one of the Boxborough Small Business Grants, and she was granted funds, and we knew of her plans to open the bakery, and also to serve wine, and we fully support this application, for all of the reasons that Divya said, in terms of being able to have a successful business. This will really help, help her business, you know, bring in more customers. I think it'll also help the other businesses in that plaza, because there are, we still keep hearing about people that don't know that those businesses are there. So, I urge you to, to support this, this license for her. I think this is a real asset for, for Boxborough. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Abby.
You know, I will say, in, in, I lost it, oh, God, John, what did you work on, the 30-year plan? Come on. Thank you, the town's master plan. You know, having gathering places, you know, is, in taverns, that kind of thing, is definitely in the master plan, is something that people have repeatedly said they want to see in town. You know, I, I do respect this citizen. The time they took to write the letter, I, I do think that we'll work as a community to make sure that you're successful, and that if there are any issues, we'll bring them to you quickly, so that you can address them.
Yes, of course, yeah. I live in Boxborough as well, so I'm just equally concerned as the rest of you here about the safety.
Absolutely. Okay. Are there any other questions, comments, or concerns to bring forward? All right, seeing none, I move to approve the application of Thinking Flower Coffee Shop Inc.
Move to close the hearing.
Oh, I'm sorry, I move to close the, I move to close the public hearing at 7:21 PM.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Okay, 7:21. All right, thank you, Sam. I move to approve the application of Thinking Flower Coffee Shop Inc., 629 Massachusetts Avenue, Suite C, Boxborough, Mass. 01719, for an on-premises, all-alcoholic beverages packaged store license as presented.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstained? Welcome, we look forward to seeing your business open. And thrive. We're looking forward to see you thrive.
One question, where are you with the process of all your approvals and everything else, as far as what you need? You need to get to a mic to answer. So, just so we get a sense of where you are, and when you think you'll be opening, actual.
So, the good news is I have Fire Department and Building Department, they came in to inspect, and my permits are signed off today. So, four out of my five permits are signed off. I'm now looking to just get Board of Health. And I wrote an email to them, and they let me know when they're able to come in, and hopefully, if they don't see anything that needs to be changed in the facility, if they're able to sign off, then I should be able to open fairly soon after they give me the permit.
Excellent.
So, this week, next week, what's happening there?
So, if she wants, if she's able to come in in the next couple of days, let's say, I do not know yet. But I'll be able to open by the end of the week, because my hours of operation is Wednesday to Saturday, and I'm closed Sunday, Monday, Tuesday. I don't want to be in a situation where I have, I'm able to open on Saturday and then closed again, that's going to just create confusion.
In ways, we don't want to wait in ways.
So, I might just wait until next week, and I'd love to reach out to EDC and speak with Mr. Alec as well, to see what their availability is, because I'd love the town to be involved with opening. So, mid-next week, Monday, Tuesday, between Monday, Tuesday, or Wednesday, and then I'm going to stay open. If I open on Monday, I'll stay open until Saturday, and then the week after, I'll go back to my usual business hours. That's the plan I have for now. If I hear back from Board of Health between tomorrow and the after, I should be able to have a better answer.
All right. Well, we look forward to your grand opening.
We look forward to it and stopping and sampling your bakery.
All right, thank you so much. We look forward to seeing you all.
And don't feel like you have to stay. You're, you're on this side, you have to walk by everyone, we understand. You already said you have two little kids at home, we get it. All right, moving on, public input, comments from residents on non-agenda items. Does anybody have anything they want to share with the board? Feel free to grab a mic.
Grab a mic.
Or, yeah, yeah. It's because of TV, but you can come sit down with it if you want.
Kathy Morris, Liberty Square Road. I'm glad, because as some of you on the Select Board may know, my brother George has been working at times with Wes Fox and Mike Johns, et cetera. The idea of Town of Boxborough acquiring a seven-and-a-half acre household at the corner of the road. Thank you. At the time, we were talking about compensation for the lot. The present position of the family is that we would like to give the lot to the Town of Boxborough.
Oh, that's so kind.
In exchange, there is acknowledgement that there is rollback taxes, because it has been classified. We'd ask for the forgiveness of that, and then, a sign might be put up acknowledging my dad, who over the course of time did do a lot for the Town of Boxborough.
He did.
I failed to mention that, I think I'm exploiting the factor here, that the chief may also have been addressed on the subject of the pond being used as a fire pond. So, Mike Johns and I have just not been able to close ranks. We have very cordial email communications, but we haven't been able to sit down, put anything on paper to bring before you. And I, I'm looking for guidance, but I, in the past, I've been aware that certain dips to the town have to be formally accepted at a town meeting, and I wanted to put that.
Well, that was actually one of my questions for you, is how quickly did you want to achieve this? Because we could conceivably do it at the special in February, March, or annual, because I do understand that the town, the, the family's been working on this.
Right.
And you probably want some closure.
By the year end, so.
Okay.
It was at December 15th, and the paperwork involved is not--
Right.
--great, and it's, in the usual case, a property under classification, the individual comes to the town, because the town has a right of first refusal when there's an offer, and we have no offer. So, we're kind of coloring outside the lines here.
Sure.
But that would be the quid pro quo, forgive the rollback taxes, and I can get the paperwork ready very quickly. So, it does have to be distributed to Conservation Commission, various other entities to pass on, whether they would recommend that the town acquire it.
Yeah. You know, it's funny you say that. I, I, we have absolutely gone to town, meaning to accept parcels, but for some reason, I feel like the Select Board has accepted parcels before too, so I'm going to have to get some advice on that.
I think the Reuben property, which is right adjacent to my lot, had to come before a town meeting, and that was ages ago.
Yeah.
Certainly changes, so.
Yeah, we'll look into that.
I, I agree with you. I thought, see?
I agree.
Yeah, we'll talk to Alec. I think the Select Board can accept it, I think.
I think if there's no--
There's no money exchanging hands, yeah, so, if, if possible, only because we, the, we're not going to be having the December town meeting, because the, we're not going to be ready. We're not going to have everything ready, and we want to do it right. So, we're pushing December into February slash March, depending on when Blanchard's available.
Agenda items.
Yeah, it's coming up, yeah.
So, we'll, so we'll clarify with the town hall staff that if the Select Board can do it, we'll work with you to get to the end, because you're saying you need this done by December 31st?
Ideally, yes.
For tax purposes, my guess.
To close up the tax purpose.
And probably the estate.
Okay.
To be fully forthright, you say there's no money changing hands, but--
Well, the taxes, we're, if we forgive, right.
From the tax authority's point of view, the forgiveness of an obligation--
Right.
--is the equivalent to receipt of funds.
Right, that would be the one thing that would push us to a, possibly to a town meeting.
We have to do it, but the semantics, as far as that goes, you know--
Yeah.
If you were in a tough position, I don't know, but--
Okay.
Mike was going to initiate conversation with Town Council some number of weeks ago. I don't know whether that, that kicked off or not.
Okay, we'll escalate that, especially with the clock ticking.
Kathy, quick question, can you check and see if the mics turned on? It should be a button.
Oh, it sounds, I feel like I can hear you through the speaker, no?
Yeah, somebody just reached out to me and said that they--
Oh, they can't hear Kathy? Okay.
You can hear me, but I'm not being recorded, huh?
Yeah, exactly. Hold on one second. Was it on? So, Kathy, repeat everything you just said.
The 25-word or less version. Yeah, so, the family would like to give property to the town in exchange for the forgiveness of rollback taxes, and request the right to have a sign on there acknowledging my father, and we would like to accomplish that by year end.
Great, and, and we will check with town hall here to see if, if the Select Board can accept it, so we can meet your, your requested timeframe by December 31st. Hopefully, the Select Board can, and we don't have to go to a town meeting, because as you, as we said, the town meeting appears right now, won't be until March, or February, March of next year.
Okay, well, thank you very much, that'd be tremendous help.
All right, no, and thank you, that's really kind of you. Sure, absolutely, you just got to grab the mic. I know.
Kathy Morris, could you identify either the address or the parcel ID, so we know what property we're talking about? Because I don't think we all know what property you're talking about, yeah.
I don't have the parcel ID in my head, but it is right at the juncture of Route 111 and Summer Road, and it is in the southeast elbow of those two roads.
South.
It's not the land on Mass South?
I think southwest.
It's south, it's, it's--
Isn't it on both sides, or does your, does your old house, the land goes all the way down to Mass South?
It's across the street from my old house.
Gotcha, okay.
And it, it surrounds, in part, the Flamingo Market Liquor Store.
Yep.
So, that's the best identifier, I think, yeah.
Yeah, Liberty Square, Summer, the land is right here, as you're heading to Acton, yeah.
Yeah, exactly.
So, the east side.
Yeah, good, good point though, Janet.
126, Mass South?
126, yes.
Was it 126?
I believe it's 126.
Okay, great.
All right, now we all know where it is.
The town already owns a parcel adjacent to that.
Do you want to grab the mic, Wes, only because, you know, the water resources had some interest in that property? Do you mind passing the mic to Wes?
It is identified on the 1978 IEP as a Zone 1 district.
Yeah, that's why I thought, well, 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 Wes is here.
Yes, that parcel has been discussed by the Water Resources Committee. It's, it's probably within the Zone 2, or at least an IWPA, of the Acton Clapic wells. So, there are issues there that are both positive and negative about that, but as far as accepting it, I don't see a problem. I just wanted to point out that the town already owns a adjacent parcel. It's not exactly adjacent, it's on the same kitty corner with the liquor store in between. It's quite wet, but there's a, one high spot on it, and the Water Resource Committee has looked at it as a potential source for firefighting water, and, and we just never moved on it, because-- And, and we just never moved on it because it gets complicated, all right? So I, I think that, I view this as a positive move and would consider that.
Thank you.
And just for reference, the lot number is fifteen dot zero eight three dot zero zero zero. So if anybody wants to look it up, we have it as part of the record.
Thank you, gentlemen, for your research. All right, thanks Kathy. We will escalate this and at the very least, you know, give you a date certain, so that you could let the family know. And again, we appreciate the generosity.
Just push it down.
Any other public input?
Thank you.
You're welcome. All right, seeing no other public input, we're going to move on to our presentation. Comprehensive Water Resources Report Phase One, Emily DeFranco from Weston and Sampson, you are on.
I hope that we, other presenters, where it will be heard if the mic was dead for them. I don't know.
I know, I know.
Anyway, so I'm Les Fox, Chair of the Water Resources Committee, and with me to my left is Emily DeFranco from Weston and Sampson. She is one of the principals working on a comprehensive water resource report for the town along with her colleague Kevin McKinnon. And so this is the wrap-up, if you will, the main deliverable for a study that's been going on for just about a year. We've had a number of reports and meetings and briefed the board at times on this. It was a very long report, that that's just the front picture of it. And it will be posted on our part of the town website when she gives me the last tweak on the wording. We've been going back and forth on polishing this for a long time and it's in very good shape. It's very comprehensive. It should be seen as a resource document for anyone else to take this further. By the way, I have to say, this is kind of historical and Kristen may appreciate this, the town has been studying water for a long, long time. In fact, when your father was on, I forget which board he was on, but he was involved in water studies back in the eighties, I think.
That would be ZVA probably.
Yeah, so.
Or Select Board. I really don't know. No, that'd be Select Board.
I, yeah, I don't know, but.
And I chaired it at one point, too. I mean.
Yeah, that's right. You were on one of the Water Resources Committee. And so this is a, the most recent study in the town's long journey to understand what we need and what we have for water. And we think this is a nice place to leave things for temporarily till we decide what to do next, and there are many directions to go.
Yeah.
There are so many questions to be answered, but the results of this study are very positive and I think Emily is going to give you some insight into that. And we don't have a quorum of a Water Resource Committee here. We have Janet Keating Conley behind me, he's one of our members, and John Markowitz is there, and I hope I didn't miss him way back. So that's it.
Steve's on, Steve's on the.
Oh, I'm sorry, Sam is.
Well, I'm a member, but also I'll say Steve Schmidt is on.
Who is?
Steve Schmidt.
Steve Schmidt.
Oh, Steve. I couldn't see. Okay, well, Steve's on there.
Do you want to call your board to order then, since now we know your forum?
He's not here, can we?
You better do it.
Just do it.
We don't have a discussion, we're not going to call to order.
Okay, you're trying, okay, fair.
Let me turn things over to Emily and I'm sure she'll be able and happy to take a few questions if the board has time for such a thing.
I'm going to be, so the last time I read one of these reports was, was the last time we had the Water Resources. I am most interested to see how things have changed. It sure feels wetter out there. We had a lot of water then, I feel like we have more, so I'm looking forward to this. All right. Is this a good place to stand? Anywhere you're comfortable. I want to, I have a lot of things happening right here, it feels like, so. Wherever you're comfortable. Thank you. Well, I'm Emily DeFranco, I'm from Weston and Sampson. I'm a senior project manager. And, you know, this, we've been working with Les for a little over a year-ish, I think, getting this project going and working through this project. And Kevin McKinnon, who is one of the principals at Weston and Sampson, worked on this with us. He's also working with Les on the Littleton-Boxborough connector, so he's really involved. He's a, he's more of the groundwater expert. I'm more of a watershed planner. All of those worlds collide into things like this type of report. So really, this, you know, this is sort of building upon, it's not just building upon, it's also a place to, where we wanted to go back and look at all the work that the Water Resources Committee has done over the years. Wait, this way? Oh, somebody wants to be admitted. Hold on. All right, you're good. This is not moving.
Hold the clicker.
I think you have to point it at.
Is it, what am I? Oh, Nick, where do we have to point it? Or where's John's laptop?
You can point it directly this way.
This button, right? Maybe, maybe not. Am I too far?
Hold on.
Oh my gosh, I've got three Stooges in my head. Step by. I know. Yeah, okay. Maybe we need a battery. Maybe I'm just bad at it. I don't know.
Rajan, can you advance it?
Yeah, I'll just have you do that, maybe. All right. Thank you. We can just go to the next one. That's just a basic agenda. Oh, is that Steel Farm? Looks like Steel Farm. Yeah. So we'll talk a little bit about the project background. If you could just go to the next slide. This way, I just wanted to, you know, we wanted, one of the goals of this was to really look through all of the work that has been done already and get it all into one place. Because, you know, how things go with old plans and old documents, they end up, you know, it's a hard copy on a shelf somewhere and it's not actually useful. We wanted to go through all of that. So that was sort of the first task, was to review all of these documents, talk with the Water Resources Committee, get input from them, and make sure all of those were referenced and that, you know, we pulled out the main pieces from those reports to really be able to talk about what's happening next and where we are now. So sort of as our baseline to bring us up to speed. So this is a range of old reports, you know, some from, you know, twenty, even the master plan from 2024. But a lot of, you know, looking at water resources in 2002. Where are we now? What has changed? Looking at, you know, options to improve drinking water quality and an old build-out analysis, not that old, but 2014, we updated that as well, which we'll talk about on the next slide, if you can just go there. There we go. So this is, there's a lot in this report, which I think is a good thing because everything really is now in one place. This looked predominantly at water quantity and not so much water quality. Because without sampling the groundwater, we weren't going to be able to do that, but trying to identify, really, you know, it's an impossible question to answer, do we have enough water? Without long-term gauges in the ground monitoring your consumption, we can, we can estimate how much water you all use and how much you're going to eventually use based on literature values of how much water one person uses in a day and things like that. And that's really the level of what this study is. But we also wanted to take, we wanted to sort of inventory all of your existing water resources and get them into one place. So where are all of your surface water bodies? What are your impairments? Where, you know, where are all of the drinking water wells within town? Where are the fire ponds where we can identify them? Things like that. And then there is information in there about water quality and water quality things we might want to consider for, you know, moving forward. But there's not a water quality analysis within this report, so I just wanted to preface it with that. So the, really the front section of this report is looking first at the water resources, all of those things I just talked about, the inventory and potential threats to water quality. And then we wanted to look at not just your population, like your projected population growth, looking at census data, things like that. We also wanted to conduct an updated build-out analysis, and I'll talk more about that when I get there. But the difference between the population projections and the build-out analysis is really just people versus where the people can go. And that's based on zoning, but also environmental constraints. So can you put a house where? You know, we have to have that sort of funneled through for the build-out analysis to really then, because you could otherwise infinitely increase your population, pretty much. So there are limits to that, and so that's documented in here as well. So the next is to, we wanted to do an assessment of current and future drinking water demand and then estimate groundwater recharge. So recharge, I'll talk about that when we get to the slide, but that's really how the groundwater gets filled back up. And how can we estimate that? And then what does that mean for your use? It's kind of a, you know, a balance right there. We did a brief assessment of your current and future wastewater needs when we're looking at septic systems and how much, how, where they are, how much we use them, that type of thing. So there's some of that as well. And then we looked at a high-level review of your regulations to just sort of see what are some things we could recommend thinking about in the future, especially with the results of this. So Rajan, you could go to the next slide, please. And maybe the next one. There's too many placeholders, I'm sorry. So this is a very, very small table, but I just, all we did at the beginning is literally look at your current population, 2020, and then the population projections using the UMass Census Bureau, or the US Census Bureau, the UMass Donahue Institute, to look at what is predicted for your population increase by 2050. So it's projected just based on numbers to be a 28% increase. So if you can go to the next slide, and I just kind of did the animation, so you can just click twice and be done. One more. Perfect. All right. And so we pair that, I really feel like looking at projected population is the easiest thing to look at. You're just looking at what do we expect might happen. But then we did a community, or a build-out analysis using a GIS add-on called Community Vis. It's software that basically doesn't just, like I was mentioning, doesn't just look at the numbers, but it looks at the land, where. Oh, the pointer? All right. You're giving me too many things again. I'm probably going to mess it up. I'm going to try. Oh, look. Yes, thank you. That's helpful. So basically, we wanted to look at where, like I said, that, where the population could move to within your town. And these build-out analyses are, they do two different things. The first is a numeric build-out. So we're just looking at, you know, essentially build-out based on your zoning regs. So, you know, where can residents move and how big could the houses be, that type of thing. And then, but it also does a spatial build-out, so, which I think is what the value is here. And that's where you're really also kind of funneling through, it's like you're putting all these numbers through this funnel of zoning regs and where. So where could you realistically build and which lots are pretty much unbuildable, that type of thing. So that really narrows that number down and it takes it from, you know, or it doesn't narrow it down so much as place it on a map where you might expect that to be, which is what we want when we're looking at something like drinking water and septic systems. We want to know where they're going to go. So here's, when I talk about drinking water in a minute, these groundwater basins will make more sense. But basically, it's just a way to break up the town based on where the groundwater is within the town. So I will show you this on a slide in a minute, but here are your six groundwater basins, which are shown in the different, you know, if you can kind of see these red lines that differentiate them. And it shows you sort of where, when you use a build-out analysis with something like this, it's going to show you where the development, which basins are going to be more impacted. So you'll have more homes in which basin. So looking at the build-out analysis, the potential dwelling units is kind of how they, that's the number that comes out of Community Vis. So in total, you have space for about 263 more dwelling units, is what they call it. And that is essentially a 14% increase in number of dwelling units. Again, it's not population, but it's like, like things you can put in the ground. And you can also see that with that, it shows you which one of these basins is going to have the most potential. So the Guggens Brook, am I saying that right? Okay. Nice. I, thank you. The Guggens Brook groundwater basin would have the, you know, the most potential. It also, but it's not as big of a percent increase as some of the others. So the Heath Hen Meadow Brook, even though it's less, it still has a higher percent increase, so there's more room to grow from what there is now.
Just one question. When you say dwellings, do you make a difference, differentiation between a house or a business or is a dwelling just a dwelling? Because, you know, a house has one, two, three, four people in it versus a dwelling could have thirty people during.
It's not going to, it's going to be more like a house. We do have when we, it's going to be like more, it's going to be more in that capacity. It's going to, like more of a residential property. So we will talk about the commercial growth in a minute. But for, this is just general residential dwelling. Yep. So that's essentially what that means. So this, there's a lot in these tables and a lot in these reports, but this is really showing you where, and you can see on the map, all of the dots are where the potential houses could go, essentially. So it shows you what that could look like. Of course, if, you know, your zoning regs change or there's an earthquake, things could change. But that's, you know, based on your, the current GIS layers and your zoning regs, that's what we have. Will you go to the next slide, please? All right. So now these groundwater basins can make more sense. I'm realizing we should have done it in a different order, but that's okay. So when we look at surface water, we talk about a watershed. And essentially, a watershed in any capacity is if, you know, imagine a raindrop falling on the ground, it's going to go to the lowest point and all of the water that drains to one point is within the watershed of that water body. Groundwater is not the same. Groundwater is a tricky thing, harder to understand, but they are contained in their own way. So basically, we looked at water within this report, start at the surface watershed level, and then you can bring it down to the groundwater level because there are groundwater basins essentially that are delineated through different, essentially, like GIS layers, but also groundwater recharge layers. So these are the major groundwater basins that provide groundwater to the Town of Boxborough, also to the surrounding towns, you can see. So groundwater basins, as any watershed basin, do not care about town boundaries. The thing with recharge is that, so when we're looking at how those basins get filled up, it's not going to be whatever falls in this little spot in the Beaver Brook, groundwater basin is only available to the Town of Boxborough. So when we're looking at what's being taken out of that basin, we have to look at the entire basin, because that's just the way groundwater works. So, you know, the water that's up in this portion will, you know, it's tied together in such a way that you can't just say Boxborough uses X percent of this groundwater basin. We can say that with land area. So you can see here, this is just, you know, the Beaver Brook groundwater basin is about 33% of it, of the entire basin is located in the town. But we can't say that that means you use 33% of the water. If that, that's the shortest way that I should have said that at the beginning. So there's also, you know, we, Boxborough mostly relies on private, relies on private and small community water systems. There are limited areas of town that receive water from interconnections, from Littleton and Acton, including the Boxborough Connector, Littleton-Boxborough Connector. But for the most part, everybody that lives here relies on groundwater in some capacity. So just, that's like the bottom line of that. If you want to go to the next slide for me, thanks. So what we looked at here was we estimated the current drinking water demand based on your residential, you know, basically who, this is based on calculations of known literature values of how many, like, you know, gallons of water per person consumes each day. And that, that includes multifamily homes and things like that. And then the estimated commercial demand, same kind of thing, literature values based on where the part, where the buildings are, that type of thing. And so the estimated total demand for Boxborough, not even, you know, not thinking about anything outside of Boxborough, is about 190 millions of gallons, gallons per year. And that's just based on residents, essentially. If you want to go to the next slide, please. So when we sort of look forward and we're adding in those population projections and the build-out analysis, we can start looking at, here's your 189, 190 current demand. And the reason we have two, two numbers for the higher future demand is that commercial demand, you don't know what is going to go in. So we ended up going, sticking with if you never had another commercial building go in, and then if every space you had available for commercial buildings was put in. So sort of maxing it out based on your zoning regs and all of that and what was available. So that's why you have this sort of range. So essentially, you're at 190, the future predictions based on population and build-out, somewhere between 205 and 607. So it could go up as high as 221% from where you are now.
But as you said, it's really commercial, that's really a big, big factor in that.
Yes, exactly. So, and that's also commercial if, which is unlikely that every piece of commercial, you know, that's like the, unlikely, but we needed, we wanted to have a range in there for you, so. All right, if you don't mind going to the next slide. So that's helpful to know. Here's our 205, you know, current, and then the 205 to 607. So, but what we want to know is, okay, well, do we have enough water? You know, what does that mean? So to be, we didn't do this analysis for every other town. You know, that would have been extra work that was outside of what we were doing. But there are ways to estimate the groundwater withdrawal from the entire set of these basins based on, you know, essentially the, you know, mass permitting tools have these calculations. So they estimate that the groundwater withdraw, withdrawals from all six of these basins in a given year currently is 979 millions of gallons per year. So that includes your 190, but total, this is where we're at now. And then what we want to know is how does that fill up? What does that compare to how those basins fill up? And the recharge, the total recharge rates, so on present day, is 6,320 millions of gallons per year to 15, to almost 16,000. per year to 15, to almost 16,000. So we can't say that, you know, for sure that this 979 is correct. We know that it could go up. But even if it went up, there seems to be, based on quantity and based on these numbers and based on the experience, especially of Kevin McKinnon, who's been doing this for 30 years, he was like, oh, no, that looks good. So in my mind, I think, okay. So there are ways to, you know, we could, I'd say on the high-level assessment, there appears to be more than enough water to meet the needs for the town. You know, again, there's a million caveats that go with that, of course, but based just on these numbers, so.
And we don't know if that's good water or bad water, as you said very, very early, Ron, right?
That's very true, and we'll talk about that as well. That's, we're just talking about quantity. So this has nothing to do with quality. You know, the water that is going to, the people that will get hooked up to the Littleton-Boxborough Connector, there's enough water over there, but they just can't use it. You know, so it's not, it's not a qual, it's just quantity-based. So if you don't mind going to the next slide. So we also did a wastewater assessment. And, you know, for this type of study, for any study, looking at septic systems, you really can't get that much more information than what's available in your Title V records or what's available on GIS or knowing that there's a parcel that's not hooked up to, you know, a wastewater treatment plant, so therefore it must be on septic systems. So we're essentially just trying to gather information about these septic systems. So the total parcels, the total properties in Boxborough is about, you know, 1,700. Based on that and looking at mass GIS tax parcel data, we estimated that there are about 1350 septic systems within the town. And so that's the first part of this. That's just based on GIS. And then we did a GIS, we call this an environmental risk assessment, where we're then looking at where these septic, where these parcels are located and if they have any sort of limitations that might put them, not necessarily more at risk for failure or malfunction of your septic system, but if something did, like if your septic system failed, that, the chance that it could get into water, to surface water bodies and groundwater resources would be higher if, you know, you were situated in a flood zone, you had limited soils, you know, you were in the, the 1% FEMA flood zone area, or you were located within 100 feet of a water body. So we classify those properties in GIS as Tier 1. Tier 2 takes out the FEMA flooding, essentially, and the DEP Zone 1 properties as well. And Tier 3 is just everything else. So we're trying to find a way to rank these parcels. And so of your almost 1,400 parcels with septic systems, about 161 of them, 64 of them fall into this Tier 1. So if you want to go to the next slide for me. So then, the next piece of this, I told you this was a long process of work. We then looked for those Tier, 164 properties, we then looked through the Title V records to try to get some information on those properties. And, you know, when you're looking at those records, you can get things like a record of failure or malfunction. You can see when the septic system was replaced, or if it's, if there's no record, that shows us it's probably not been replaced ever. And so from those, about 60 that had Title V records were older than 20 years old. And, you know, most septic systems, that's like, that's life right there for a septic system is 20 years, 20 to 30 years maybe, depending on where you are. So that's, you know, it's just beginning to give you some information on what that might be. So, you know, this can be added to. There's now basically an inventory of the Tier 1 properties and the ones, you know, that we'd want to be concerned about in the future. And, you know, with population projection, there will be, you know, with the build-out and the population projections, there will be more people, more septic systems and all of that. So it's really not necessarily for you to say, let's go find those old septic systems. It's more, okay, now we know that we, this might be an issue. Sometimes we target public education to those homes that might not know that they have septic systems, and they might not know about pumping their septic systems and things like that. So that's been, you know, as a next step in a lot of similar projects I've worked on, it's targeting those Tier 1 properties for education first. I've worked with communities that have then put in an overlay district for the Tier 1 properties and required them to be pumped. So every three years. That's not necessarily saying you have to, but it begins to set up a mechanism for you to be able to do that if it becomes an issue in the future. If you want to go to the next slide for me, please. All right. One more. All right. So we had, there's, I think, eight total next steps that were recommended that we, that are sort of a mix of what we think and then also working with the Water Resources Committee, making sure that we had all of their input as well. The first one is basically what I was just talking about, letting people know about stuff. Letting them know, you know, the Tier 1 property homeowners that they have properties that might be in limited soils or, you know, not even telling them that, just saying, you have a septic system, you should pump it, here's the name of a pumper, here's why, you know? The next one really talks about sampling and water quality. So we now have a somewhat of a handle on the quantity of water, and we're feeling pretty good about the quantity of water, but that's all we can tell you based on this study. There's ways to set up town-wide drinking water sampling programs, whether it's, you know, identifying properties that might be at risk because of things like statewide PFAS sampling or something like that, and then reaching out to those homeowners and providing them information or even funding to get their, their wells sampled, or even just providing the information that they could get their wells sampled. For us to really then be able to say, okay, here's how much water you have, but the bacteria levels, the PFAS levels, whatever it is, are too high on this side of town, so we should focus our efforts on figuring out what else we can do. One thing that's in the report that's not in the presentation, because I was trying not to just keep going on forever, is all of the alternative sources that have ever been talked about, I'd say, or studied in some of those old reports and that the Water Resources, you know, those are all documented within this report. So that's a tie, and they're put on a map as well. So if you get to that place where you're starting to look at like, okay, the southeast corner of the town has a problem with something, here are the, the sources that you can, the alternative sources that could exist, that would be a good place to start. So that's there as well, which I think is helpful. That's really, you know, the Water Resources Committee have been gathering that data for a long time. So I really think that's a value, a valuable piece to this. You know, right now, the Tier 1 septic system properties are the only properties that are in that inventory that we gave to LESS. We could do, we could add to that, you know, the Tier 2 properties, all, most of these, I mean, as in every town, I say Massachusetts, I live in New Hampshire, Massachusetts is far ahead of New Hampshire in the sense of having anything electronic, you at least have, and at least having Title V. We don't have that in New Hampshire. So, but towns don't have electronic records of, you know, if, if you transfer properties, you actually get information with Title V, you don't other places. But there's no, beyond the Title V database, there's no other place that that stuff is located. So now it's sort of beginning to, there's a framework for you all to add on as needed. Expanding the study beyond the town borders to include, so if we wanted to get more accurate groundwater withdrawals from those other parts of the groundwater basins, we could do that. I don't, I don't, based on these numbers and talking with Kevin, I think that's, maybe down the road could be a step. That's not an immediate need. I don't feel like we're right there on the edge, like, I don't know if there's enough water, I think we're okay. But that's something I think is worth keeping in there if it becomes an issue, if we have a long periods of drought or anything like that, that might be worth considering. Will you go to the next slide, please? So, you know, based on what we were talking about earlier, there come, what other properties can we put under conservation and give to the town and protect, I think is an important piece as well. We do have the town's firefighting-related water needs. We do have a map with the locations of most of the cisterns and fire ponds, not all. We didn't do an evaluation for that at all, so that could be added if that becomes a huge source or a huge withdrawal, that might be worth considering. You know, I think having continued discussions about regional water supply options with neighboring towns, just like you're doing with Littleton, are great, especially as we get more water quality data. That's just true for most areas that are, that have any kind of issues. Follow-up work with further evaluations recommended in this report, including additional work needed to address any water-related actions, and then just any other topics that would be interesting to the Select Board or to the town. You know, obviously going through LESS first, but now we have this document sort of to build on with a lot of laid-out options of, of things for next steps. So that's really all I have. I'm happy to take questions now and if anybody has any.
No, I mean, I haven't actually read your report, so I, this is a great, high-level presentation, but I kind of feel like I don't have questions until I actually dig into it and spend some time.
That is fine. If you do have questions after this, you can just send them to LESS and he'll get them to us and we'll still answer any questions as needed. Don't worry.
So, so I will say, it's pretty much the same report as we had in 2008. I think that's the last time I was on the committee. I know that we also semi-joke that all water flows out of Boxborough, that we are dependent upon rainfall.
Yeah.
The rain comes down, we recharge, but all water flows out.
Yeah.
Something we have to be aware of. I am privy to quite a few water test reports, and I will say the majority of homeowners are not testing for PFAS now.
Mm-mm.
And as a matter of fact, several of the water quality companies that I work with are telling them not to bother because it's too early. Because, but, but, well, they're, I'm just saying.
I know, I know.
But this is what the people selling the systems are saying.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, I get it.
Don't even test yet, changes are coming, you know, it's fascinating to see that coming forward.
Oh, yeah.
But I will say, in general, we have sodium, we have manganese, we're hard.
Yeah. I know.
That is our water.
I know.
Because we're Roxborough.
Yeah.
Everything is a big flat rock.
And that's, yeah.
So, yeah, so it is fascinating to see all the sites you look forward, the last mine is, there were two of them, this, that.
It's not like that. No, no, no. It's not, yeah. It's, and there's a nice executive summary for you, don't worry.
Awesome.
But it's also site-specific things beyond sort of the regional, like you might have PFAS in a whole area. If the homeowners aren't pumping their septic systems and it's not cited correctly, that's bacteria that's just going into there. You know, so there's, that's why I like individual homeowners, not just, I like to encourage everybody to sample for something because there's, there could be something in there and you can do something about that if that is what it is. But it's not always just the big stuff. It could be something as simple as bacteria, that's, that's a huge problem, you don't want to drink that water either, but having that information.
Luckily, I don't see much of that. Like, I'm not seeing E. coli, I'm not seeing coliform, I don't see very much at all.
That's good.
Sam's laughing. Why? What do you know that I don't know?
Nothing.
No, I mean, it's good, it's nice.
I'm, I'm, go ahead.
Go.
Thank you, Emily.
Yes.
And thank you, Les, for coming in. I appreciate seeing so many members of WRC here as well. This is a cool project. I'm laughing because, as Kristen will probably be the first to tell you, everyone asks about water quality in Boxborough.
Everybody.
And no one has ever, ever asked me about water quantity in Boxborough.
Oh, see, I, I get that a lot because people coming from City Water think their well's going to run dry.
Right.
What happens when my well runs dry, I'm like, well, it shouldn't.
Yeah.
It's a normal thing, I'd say, for people not to think about water quantity unless you're like the Water Resources Committee, because you just assume the water's going to come out of your town.
Or unless you're trying to, you know, buy a house, which I think is.
Right. And that's possible. But then the water quality people worry about if they have kids or they don't know, but they, they just don't ever question the water will come.
Right.
It's just what it is, you know?
So I would take that to say that I'm looking forward to the next part of this discussion, to looking at some of these recommendations that sort of nudge into the water quality space, and I look forward to the WRC picking that up as well. I did have a conceptual question.
Sure.
Obviously, the, the supply, the quantity question depends in part on the activities of other towns, since the basins don't, you know, touch town lines. Is that, is that the same for quality concerns? Are, are, are bacteria or PFAS or whatever, are those traveling throughout a basin?
They can be.
In two other towns? And are they limited to each basin? Or do they, do they sort of move about and it's sort of a different type of analysis?
They're going to be more limited to the basin.
Okay.
They could travel through a basin, but they don't necessarily mean that they're traveling through the whole basin.
But it's not like if one basin, if, if, if there's PFAS at one place in a basin, the whole basin is contaminated.
Definitely not. Definitely not. And normally, and it's, it's groundwater, Kevin always also says groundwater's tricky because it's, you don't know exactly, your house could have PFAS, your neighbor could not, and then the next guy could. So it's not, it's very, it just depends on how it travels underground, which is, there's no, that you just can't figure that out. We could do dye testing and things like that, but for the most part, the best advice is for, the more data we have, if everybody in town could sample their groundwater, we would be able to start tracing where it's going a little bit, based on things like contaminants and things like that. But also, we would just have more data and then we'd be able to say, every home in this, you know, one of these groundwater basins is a problem. So this is the basin we need to focus those alternative options on because it's a problem for everyone or for half the basin, you know?
Well, are we sampling our groundwater?
Well, you're not sampling the groundwater at a level that would provide that information.
Should we be, or is that extra?
No.
Do you mind extra, extra money, extra time, extra?
Just extra general.
Extra what?
Too much.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Too academic.
No.
Oh, okay.
No, no. I think, I think you would have, honestly, it's better to have, instead of just sampling randomly, I mean, we could, Kevin is very good at coming up with a sampling plan of where to put monitoring wells and get those in the ground. And we could do that in a targeted place to be able to make sure that we're hitting neighborhoods and things like that where there are people. It can be cheaper just for homeowners to sample.
Yeah.
Because you, they're, you know, the way people are located throughout a town, it ends up being an easier, you're getting more data that way and you're getting more useful data because then we can say directly that it is impacting residents.
So let me ask a question on that, because I was going to, thank you for letting me into, I'll ask you and Kristen, I get the same thing. If a person tests their water, and I'm going to be very generally, it comes back bad.
Yeah.
What, does that get reported to somebody? Can we not sell the house now or?
So currently, it's.
It doesn't get reported.
No. Currently, there are no private well regulations in Massachusetts.
Right.
So it's just for, you know, so, but again, you'd have to really tell people it's okay. If they were trying to sell their home, they would have to deal with it. If, if they wanted to drink out of it, they would want to deal with it, I would imagine. But, so there's, that can be a tricky part, too, if some people don't, it's almost like they don't want to know because they worry about the regulatory side of things or what that could mean for them. Do they need to put a expensive filtration system in? So in that case, if that really seems to be a problem where people are resistant, then putting in groundwater monitoring wells on municipal property is another way to go about it, to get some information, but just maybe not as much as if you could get a, you know, house by house or neighborhood by neighborhood sample.
I guess what I'm asking is this, if there is a known spot, location.
Yep.
Where there's a PFAS issue. Could you, in theory, like, find the extent of that contamination and then figure out where it's going next and then try and figure out how to contain it? Or are the neighbors of those spots basically, hope it doesn't come this way?
You couldn't do it with one sample. Like, if you sampled and had one hit, you know, from one house. You would need a handful of them within a neighborhood, I'd say.
But is that type of spot prevention something you could do, something that's advisable to do? Or is it just too wonky engineering?
That's not wonky engineering, because what would happen in that situation is like, let's say it's like a condo.
Yeah.
You know, then we would recognize that that was a problem, they had PFAS issues, and we would recommend putting in the, like, carbon filters that you need for PFAS. So, and, but knowing where it goes beyond that without additional samples, we wouldn't be able to do it. But for something like on that level, there's things to do. But for something like on that level, there's things to do, so you don't have to close the well down necessarily, especially in that situation. If, if it was a homeowner in a whole neighborhood and everybody had, you know, PFAS in their private wells, then you'd be looking at putting in some kind of neighborhood system. Um, but again, we couldn't do that for the neighborhood based on that one sample. So, it's like a yes and a no. We can figure it out based on data, we can give options and alternatives to remediate what you have there. Or, you know, add to sources like the Littleton-Boxborough connectors doing that same work, essentially, and recommend where those could be or pull up some of the alternatives that have already been identified. But we couldn't trace it that discreetly at that level.
But we probably get more bang for our buck with homeowner education, outreach.
Yeah, and encouraging them to test and things like that. I would say that would be, in my opinion, a good next step for that. A lot of people just don't know even how to test their wells or what that means, or if they are to test it, what, what do the results mean? And then are they gonna be forced to spend thousands of dollars to fix it, you know, so.
Great answer, because that's my question.
Okay.
And I'm a homeowner in a town.
Yeah, yeah.
So how do, I, I mean, do you have experiences with towns similar to ours and what is that next step typically for encouraging townwide testing? Do you look for, you know, a couple of testing facilities that are willing to give discounts? Are you looking for dropping offs, you know, how do you do it?
Yep, yep. It's different, I think, based on interest. Um, normally, going through something like the Water Resources Committee and having, and working with them to figure that out. Um, working also with the state, because we can get test kits mailed to people, you know, things like that, but, but streamlining the process. Starting with sort of like a, even an online survey or a mailing of who would be interested, and this is why you should consider it, and then starting to get an idea of numbers in neighborhoods and things like that. That's a, it's a, it's a good start that gives you the scope.
Do you have a focus on a locus? Like, like what if you said, all right, we're gonna, we wanna test all the homes in the Beaverbrook watershed?
Yep.
Do, do you start there, or do you just go townwide?
That's town by town, that's town by town, yeah. Whatever makes town for, whatever makes sense for you all, but whatever it is can just be easily transferred. So if you wanted to start with, you know, one of your more developed.
Yeah, I just picked Beaverbrook because it's biggest, and they're actually getting town water, they don't need it.
They don't need it.
Keith Henmido.
Yeah, let's say that, right? But that's one way to, you know, but there's, at the same time, it might be worth just putting it out there to the town and then seeing. We get a lot of information, even if we had, you know, a handful here, a handful here, the wider throughout the town would be able to give us a better idea of some of those pathways, um, and where they might be going.
Tell me what kind of tests you typically ask. I mean, I, I just had my well done last year. I, I did everything, including PFAS. It was almost $700, which I did not know. I wouldn't have done it if I'd known it was $700.
Yeah, fair.
So after I said yes.
Fair, yeah.
Um, but now I have that.
Because that's expensive.
Right, but that's my point, is like, so what, but like I said, I did everything.
Yep.
Like, what would you typically encourage a homeowner to do? Because I, I think the least expensive task is like $50, but it doesn't do much.
Right.
It's bacteria.
Bacteria.
Yeah, it's just bacteria, and then you ramp up from there.
Yeah. Well, giving options for people, um, I would say, in New England, I would recommend PFAS for, you know, in any, honestly, I, I feel like. And we could help determine, maybe there's certain areas of town that, that's not needed, um, and we could sort of almost provide an overlay to figure out what sampling. We just did, um, a project with Mass DEP where we were costing out all, like, the different scenarios. So we have all of that information of, you know, and there's, that's based on their Model Board of Health regulations that they provide, essentially, which Les is familiar with. So, yeah, go ahead.
Uh, go use the mic, you know that.
Yeah, this is a very interesting topic. Uh, DEP is very interested in what's the quality of the water everywhere, and they have been trying to figure out what's the best way to find that answer out to that. Um, as you know, they had a free testing program here in Boxborough. They had test kits for 40 residences, I think, looking for PFAS. And the program was subscribed fully, I believe, and PFAS was found in some of the wells. We, at one point, were tracking what was found out about that, but we kind of backed off on that because it takes a lot of work, it's very tedious. But we may get back to that. The, the more interesting question or difficult question is, if you encourage people to test, and actually, they decide to test for PFAS, and I asked this question for, of someone at DEP, fairly knowledgeable. If they find PFAS in their home private well, that's not regulated by the state, and they find that it exceeds the minimum acceptable level, the 20 PPT, uh, then what? Well, what I'm told is the state is not going to require them to do anything, but they want to know where it was and they'll track it. Because they are interested in this larger question, what's going on out there? Um, there have been outbreaks of PFAS in areas where there are known sources, point sources, like old firefighting foam, uh, uh, overuse and not this town necessarily, but out towards Devon's, for example, and points further west. And they try to find out where else is it, and it just becomes vanishingly hard to find out because it's expensive and you have to know where to look. And of course, you don't know where to look because you don't know where it is. So it's, it's a hard problem. Um, I think the right approach is to have some, encourage people to do some testing for a reasonable chemistry mix, to give us some insight into water quality. PFAS isn't the only thing you're worried about.
Right.
You know, is your water too salty? I mean, it's, people.
Well, yeah, we know we have that issue. Well, that's what I was wondering, is do we reach out to Neshoba Analytical, and, you know, I don't even know who else is.
We're gonna have a nice conversation about this, the Water Resources Committee, try to come up with a game plan. Um, and testing can cost money, but what's the right balance? You know, I encourage people to be aware and do their own awareness for the septic systems, for sure. It's surprising how many people don't even pump their system, you know, so.
Oh, yeah.
Is, I, I have a second question. Is there a time you should test, like, when if you, if you just?
Oh, that's a good question.
If you, if you just had your septic tank pumped, should you test right away, or should there be a gap between the two?
Or even time of year.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, all of the above.
I mean, with the septic pumping, not necessarily. If you're pumping regularly, it's prob, you know, it's, it's working like it should. You know, essentially, in theory, right? Um, and it should, so I think that it would be surprising if you did those two things together, but I wouldn't say that it's gonna really skew the results, unless you haven't pumped ever, and then all of a sudden you pump and you, you know, um, then it, then that would give you some information. Time of year, I would say, when you're using it, you know, so if it's a seasonal home, that definitely want to do that during the season. Wouldn't necessarily sample during the winter, but you can. I mean, it's, you're drinking it all the time. So, the more data, the better, you know, when we don't really, we're still learning things about that. But there's no real recommended sample this month and not that month. It's really, just please sample to let us know what we have, that what we're dealing with, and then we can figure out a plan to make that, you know, to improve it and make sure your water's safe.
Kathy had a question.
Yeah. Folks can help me if I've got this wrong. So our Board of Health is putting forward a proposed regulation which would require testing for, of wells, private wells, on sale of the property.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, we're the only one, as, to my knowledge, Boxborough's the only one in Neshoba Board of Health that does not require it. Like Harvard, Bolton.
Yeah, but Harvard does, but I think Boxborough's working on a regulation. I don't know where that stands, you may know.
I, I feel like it stalled out. I thought it was coming last year and it never did.
And they never did get to it, right?
Haven't gotten to it. I know there's a lot of pushback, a lot of people don't want mandatory testing.
Right.
And I know Stowe is pushing back on it right now.
Harvard has, has such a plan.
Harvard, Bolton, and Stowe all have it.
You know, but that's kind of a thing that town could think about doing.
I, I will say that's gonna be 35 houses a year.
Right.
It's gonna be what?
It'll be like 35 houses a year, so it's, it won't be a huge sampling, but it'll be random.
It's not similar to a title five.
Yeah.
Yeah, but, but I, I think.
It's a lot.
That's a lot.
It, it is, but 35.
Compared to the data set we've got, that's, that doubles the data set, yeah.
It's just good data to do it. I mean, putting the, my, my, my good intuition, I mean, the, the, the home buyer should know that. If, if it's not required, the seller.
Yeah.
Well, I have to get on the soapbox for a little bit. This whole learning experience for me is, okay, you look at the regulated wells that are regulated by DEP. They are public water supplies, they have to be tested rigorously all the time, and they have to toe the line. That counts for about half of the people in Boxborough. Half the people in Boxborough, roughly speaking, are on public water supply wells that are highly regulated. The rest of us are on private wells, and you might know something about it, you might not. You certainly don't test at the level they do for a public water supply.
Yeah.
So it's a huge difference in the world of, what do we know about our water? It depends on who you are and what you're drinking.
Yeah. Kathy, did you still have a comment or a question?
Yeah.
Um, just pass the mic.
Thank you. Um, just, I am working on implementing an ADU, accessory dwelling unit, after all this planning board effort. And if someone complies with the law, you are required to do water testing.
Okay, and you're surrounded by conservation land. Hopefully, you're in good shape.
Right, and I'm also a one person pissing into my system, too, so, you know, it's, it, it makes, I'm listening to you, but it makes a difference residence by residence, you know, whether you have two parents and 2.1 children, or, you know, what it is. But, um, the price of testing, just to put it out there in the mix, um, Neshoba does have a panel, minimum panel.
Mm-hmm.
And it's 140 bucks.
Okay.
Uh, you, that's, you must do those tests.
Okay.
Um, I was speaking with Jim Greffey because he will be there to draw the water sample tomorrow.
Oh.
And he recommended, since I've never had it done, and sit on rock, the radon test in the water. And the P, the PFAS test itself is $400.
I know, yeah. So that's how I got to seven, yeah.
Yeah, exactly.
It's very expensive.
So, you get the minimum, the recommended, I'm up to, you know, almost $200 there. You add the PFAS and I'm almost to that number, so.
Yeah.
So then that goes back to my question. So you, you reached out to a private company to do your private well, and that's how you're gonna get it done?
No, no. In order to get an occupancy permit for an ADU.
Oh.
I have to have a water test. So I was going to encourage you that that may become a growing base of information where you can get data if, if people legally comply with the ADU.
Right.
Um, that information will be accumulated by Neshoba because it's required as part of that conversion process. But it, it, it's not a private company. They say it has to be a state-certified water testing company. And Neshoba Analytical came up in conversation somehow, that will be the company that will do the testing. But Jim has to.
He's drawn.
Draw it, and I guess it's a sort of chain of custody thing, you know, to make sure the samples are.
When Neshoba gets the results, who, who does Neshoba give the results to?
Well, they will have it, I would expect that they would give it to Boxborough.
Well, the town will have a copy, and the Shova well will have a copy.
Yeah, yeah. So that should be sort of a self-accumulating thing, if we have more conversions.
And then that becomes part of your data.
It can be, yeah.
It, it could be a part of where we start to build a database.
Yeah.
Right, so that information is, is, so that information.
That information wouldn't be publicly available, so if you walked into the town hall and said, I'd like the lab report for this other person's home, you could not get it. Only you can request your information, what's available in public files. So if we were to aggregate data, we would not convey other people's data, because that would be, so that, because I want to actively encourage people to do this. And I don't want any disincentive, uh, people are afraid that their information would be shared beyond the bounds of what is already in place in town, which is you can't just get other people's data. So I just want to make that point.
Right. Yeah, and even in this report, we don't have people's names of where their, you know, the Title V inspections or anything like that. And that's, you know, a way to do that. For required testing, you would have to have Neshoba Board of Health and all of that. If this is a non-required program, it could be, you know, we can help determine what, normally, we'd go with the same type of regulatory, um, uh, sorry, um, panel. You know, that's sort of in the DEP Board of Health. I don't know why there's an echo.
I don't either.
Just keep going.
Just keep going, okay.
It'll go away.
Yeah, okay. Um, but it could be, it wouldn't have to be that same. You wouldn't have to have an official person come out and take the sample. A lot of times, the homeowners would take it and mail it to a lab. So we could help streamline that process with the Water Resources Committee. So it's just, you get the kit, you take your sample, you send it, the results can go to, we can determine how, what that looks like, you know? So, there's, it's not the same process, but it's, it could eventually be the same process if all the private wells are regulated. But since they're not, it's sort of, it's really just, you know, more anonymous, I'd say.
No, and this is great, because I, I'm, I'm the one who didn't know anything about it.
Yeah.
And, and we are, as a family, are trying to figure this out, and so this is perfect timing for us, so I didn't know how much, what the cost was and how to go about it.
Yeah.
And I was, you know, concerned, as, yes, you know, if we, if we decide to sell the house in 5 years, oh, no, you failed, and it's like, you know.
No, no, just septic systems for now.
So, 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 you know, as I'm writing this down, it, it seems to me, like, even when you were presenting, water sampling for quali, qualities is the most important thing to my mind, health and safety. So, um, what's out there for grant opportunities? You know, can we use CPA, you know, Community Preservation Act funding? Is that completely outside? You know, what, how do communities do this? How do they pay for this? Beyond saying, we really encourage you to spend $500.
Right.
And, and, when your groceries are $500, you pay.
Right, right. You can get grants for the outreach portion. Um, it is tricky to get grants for the sampling portion. That's not to say you can't. Um, there's source water protection grants, um, that we could look into that could, you know, be used for something like this or offset the cost. Some towns will do the thing, like, where they offset the cost for certain properties. If they're within, you know, an area that is of concern for the town, they'll, the town will pay half of the cost, the homeowner pays the other half. So there are ways to set things like that up. We can look into grant opportunities, source water protection grants, so first one that comes to mind, but there are other ones. And there are more coming out with, especially with the PFAS piece.
Well, I'd like to be first in line if there's more coming out.
Right, exactly. So, we're kind of keeping our eye on what those opportunities are.
Sure.
And that evolves.
Well, I would also encourage you, I know it's a tight fiscal year, and we are talking about an override, but I also think water quality is the basis of all of our health. I mean, like, we, we bathe in it, we brush our teeth, we, you know, I, I don't drink it, I'm not gonna lie to you, this is Poland Spring, but who the hell knows what's in Poland Spring?
It's regulated, though.
Thank you for seeing that, because my family says it's not true, and it is. Um, at any rate, so I lost my train of thought. So, no, I would encourage you to perhaps bring something forward, even if it was to figure out how we, you know, can offer whatever level of testing is recommended to an X number of households and, and, I, I kind of believe town meeting would fund something like that. If it was $10,000, $20,000, it's a minimum cost to each household. I think there'd be some positive.
We haven't really had a healthy, lengthy discussion, uh, the Water Resources Committee about this, but I'm leaning very strongly into our exploiting all of we can about testing.
Yeah.
Get as many people to voluntarily test their well and report the results in a way that everybody is comfortable with. Um, the town is continuing to try to, you know, do more on this. Now, we are also, um, participating as an applicant for a Grant from the Water Management Act that's being head, spearheaded by the Town of Acton and includes the Town of Stowe, uh, sorry, the Town of, uh, Boxborough, uh, Stowe and Littleton and Concord.
Oh, interesting.
And this is all we're looking at, regional, uh, the, the gist of that is to make sure that the towns are not drawing too heavily on the water resources.
Well, it makes sense, we all share the same water.
Right, so it's looking at, at that level, but it will, I think, be a very nice pre-planning piece for Boxborough as we begin to think about, if we ever had to tap into another source of water besides what's in the ground under our feet. For example, tapping into the MWRA through one of our neighboring towns such as Littleton or Acton, who are already, are thinking about doing that, what would that look like? How would we go about that? What's the plan look like? So it wouldn't be too early to start thinking about that, and I'm hoping that we can get some direction on that with this grant opportunity, which we should hear about by January.
Okay.
So.
Because what I do find, I've found interesting was seeing the, the number of gallons that are recharging every day, but also understanding that Acton and Littleton had significant water bans and real problems with their wells. And I'm thinking, okay, if, if we're all sharing water and all water is flowing out of Boxborough to them, you know, which is great, whatever, I, what, where's the disconnect where we have a lot of water?
And they don't.
But they don't.
Yeah.
What, what's the disconnect? And I don't know if you can even answer that question.
No, I can't. I think more with.
Yeah.
I think more with that study that Les is talking about.
Oh, actually, Air, Air had a massive water problem, too.
Yeah.
Yeah, everybody around us that had town water.
Mm-hmm.
Was basically saying, we're going dry.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah, and it's, I think that study that Les is talking about wouldn't be able to answer that, and it's, groundwater is a fickle, funny thing, you know, so it's tough to say.
I could, can I ask another question? Um, all right, Littleton's septic, Acton's, I was, I was just gonna ask if septic system, like, how, how that recharges? Because basically, you run your sink, it's going right back into your ground. Now, I know it's not gonna go the 300 feet down to my, the base of my well, but like, does that factor into Boxborough's water at all, the fact that everybody's on septic?
It can, you're putting the water back in.
Right.
Which is, you know, and it will eventually make its way down. I mean, once it's in the ground, it's in the ground, so that's part of why you, you know.
But I guess what I meant is, it's not glass for glass.
Yeah, no, no.
Glass for glass, it's not.
No, it's not that, exactly.
But I didn't mean to be gross, sorry.
Yeah, no, no, I, I get you.
You said the P-word.
Yeah. Um, but I would also say, sampling is good, but you're not gonna get people to want to do it unless they know why they should do it, that it might be a problem, all of those things. So the outreach really needs to come before that.
Okay.
Or alongside it, to get the most, to get the people on board, to understand, you know, even just telling people they have septic systems, two people will then pump their septic systems, you know, or something, you know, because they just don't know that, that's what, they don't think about it, you know? So getting people to think about that and then understand, this could be a huge problem, so we need to work towards it. That's, we gotta start there.
Well, thank you. Any other questions or anything else you all want to bring to us?
I'm curious, one other, uh, off-topic question, which has to do with, um, management of town-owned land, uh, in, specifically in furtherance of wat, water quality.
Okay.
Um, I assume the answer is just do nothing, leave it alone, which is great, but if there's anything else the town should be doing on land it owns, uh, which is something we actually have.
That's true, yeah.
Power over, and I think we're the biggest landowner in town. Uh, it would be helpful to know, you know, don't store this here, don't, you know, put this.
That's regulated under your MS4 permit for the most part.
Okay.
So I feel like in terms of where your salt piles are and where the DPW stores all their stuff at the transfer station, like, they have, um, putting plans in place for that.
But there's no, there's no, uh, uh, management of conservation land for water resources, really.
Well, they are.
There, yeah.
Transfer station, I think Brian mentioned that they actually have stepped up the sampling program around the transfer station recently.
Actually, adds on the. Actually, Ed's on the, on, it's here.
Ed may know, y'all.
Yeah. Ed, do you mind popping in? What can you tell us about water sampling at the transfer station or anyone, anywhere else in town?
It's just its normal routine with the Board of Health. They do it most likely, we did it probably in the summer, the last time he was up. So there's nothing that we do over and above what is required by Board of Health. We do have, you know, still prevention and food control plan in place in case anything does happen.
Right.
But all of, all of what we have stored or is regulated, you know, we must follow the procedures that are in that plan.
Is it just the transfer station or is there anywhere else in town that's monitored?
Just the transfer station.
Just the transfer station.
The transfer station is a cap.
A cap.
A capped landfill that you probably remember, Kristin.
Oh, yeah, I love it.
So we have to sample there. And what I understanding from Brian Lynch's conversation recently is that they've increased the amount of sampling being done. And I'm not sure where that stands right now, but that's something that can be done. Now, I think what Sam might was talking about was, what about just putting in some monitoring wells on, say, other lands that the town owns just to get a sample? Or are you thinking of something else?
Well, you know, it's cool.
Or some other, you know, you, you can manage land for invasives, climate resilient species, whatever, you know, I, I have no idea. I'm just asking, is there, are there best practices for water quality on, on a lot of the conservation land?
That's actually a great, well, conservation land municipal, because if, when you start thinking about it, we, we own land in every corner of the town.
Yeah.
You know, so that could actually be a more affordable way to figure out what's going on in each segment.
And like I said, the solution might be the cheapest solution, which is do nothing at all. But I'm just curious about something you guys see or something that the WRC'd be interested in.
For water quality, there, you're, under the MS4 permit, you have to essentially look to see what you could do to manage water quality, stormwater coming off those lands. So there is stuff kind of in place a little bit. It can always be taken farther. But municipal lands are a good place for monitoring wells. That's very true. So that's an option as well.
How expensive is a typical monitoring well?
How expensive?
Have you got any idea how expensive a monitoring, how, I don't understand, I don't know what a monitoring, is it 10 feet, is it 50 feet, is it 1,000 feet?
Uh, Brian would have to give me the number. So.
Oh, okay.
It's so many dollars a foot to drill the well and then instrumenting it and so, it's not cheap.
Okay.
To me, the low-priced way to go is to encourage people to voluntarily give us the test results of their private wells and assure them that we're not going to do anything to expose them and so on and so on. That's the biggest catch, I think.
All right.
And that's the education piece I was saying, just to make sure that people understand that. But you already have wells dug, so I try not to necessarily encourage. Yeah.
Yeah. No, 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 fair. It's just an idea.
I should, I should know the answer to this question. Is, is water quality a factor in creating the OSRP? The Open Space Recreation Plan?
The Open Space Recreation Plan?
When we're looking at, when we're looking at potential priority parcels, is, is water quality improvement a factor?
I don't know that. In the open space recreation plans that are developed? I haven't done one of those in a long time. So. Yeah, it might just be mentioned as a high level. I don't know if it's like listed as priority though.
Like conservation good?
Yeah, yeah, I don't think it is. So. If you have any other questions, just go right through Les and I'm happy to answer them or get the answer for you. So.
Awesome.
Thank you for spending so much time with us.
Thank you, yeah.
Thank you so very much, thank you.
Any other comments or anything else before we move on to the transfer station?
Les, did you have something? Did you have something you wanted to add?
No, I just want to thank you folks for giving us all this airtime to talk about water. Beginning recording, which is a good thing. And I hope you're playing, like, we're going to be on the stump, the private dirt, people test wells and do all that public education and stuff. You just don't get that.
I think would be really helpful when you're stumping, so to speak, is to tell people the minimum standards they should be reaching for and maybe even get prices from a couple of different places. I think that will help. Yeah, you probably already have all that, yeah. Yeah.
We have prices from labs and things like that.
Yeah, I had my well tested recently. It was $150, $200 bucks.
That's amazing.
Yeah. Well, I think that will take away a lot of the fear if you say, all right, this is the minimum criteria we suggest. This is your ballpark cost. It helps people make decisions. Right, isn't that crazy? It is, yeah. You can go out to dinner on Friday night or you can find out if your water is clean. What's more important?
So you can cook with it.
So you can cook with it, exactly. All right, well, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, well, thank you. And Sam, you'll keep us posted on everything as our liaison.
I imagine Les will as well. Thank you.
Excellent. All right, thank you.
Cool.
Okay.
Transfer station.
Ed, we're moving on to the transfer station. Now, I have to say, I didn't see anything in our packet about it, so I'm not quite sure what we're talking about. I know that there was an email a while ago about people coming in without stickers. So I don't know if it's that same email concern. But Ed, tell us what's up. What are we talking about?
Give us an update.
Well, this, this was brought on by a, by a resident, not by me. And not sure if the resident is present, but he said he noticed a couple of contractors who were putting stuff in the wood dumpster. And he said that they didn't have stickers. I mean, that's, you know, something we don't know. But contractors do live in town and they're allowed to use their pickup as a means to get their material, as long as it's not from their construction company, obviously. But they're, by the regulations, they're allowed a pickup truck bed once per, for open, once, once per time when we're open. So, you know, that, that's a hard one to control unless we start, you know, enforcing things that, you know, maybe not even allow the wood anymore. I, I don't know what, you know, if there's a good solution for that. Stickers, on the other hand, I mean, we're, Greg has been trying to do a better job letting people know that they need stickers. And he actually has been going to Karen with license plate numbers to see if they do have them. And then Karen has been mailing them out, the applications, so they can get the stickers.
That's a great idea, actually.
That's fantastic. Ed, that's great.
Yeah.
What, you know, the, the issue we have is that Greg says, you know, a few residents are pretty, I, I don't know the.
Sensitive?
Yeah, well, not sensitive. They're like, they're put off that they've been asked to get a sticker or they feel like they're being, they're being bothered.
Yeah.
Oh. Give them my phone number, I'll chat.
You know, it, that's unfortunate because the ones that do do it, when we did look up, a few that were in there that didn't have stickers were seniors.
Oh, okay.
They don't even have to pay for it. So we couldn't understand why they were giving Greg such a hard time about, you know, not having a sticker. So, you know, it's, it's kind of unfortunate that, that, that happens because this is, as you all know, and it's been said, it's the, the best deal in, in town.
Sure is. It's the most popular place in town.
No, I, I, I agree, Ed, with everything you said. Well, you know, it's surprising that the people that are complaining and I, you know, and especially if they're free. I can understand if someone's going to pay for it. But I think, you know, I congratulate you and Greg for stepping, stepping up the monitoring of it so that we know that people are being educated about saying that you do need it. Because it's not one of these things that's fall off. You know, you might have lived in town for 20, for, you know, for 30 years, and for the first 20 years of your life, you had to pay for it. And now you're a senior and, and you don't have to pay for it, but you still have to get it. I mean, so it's, it's kind of like, you know, it's more, it's just an education. It's like, you know, we, we just require a sticker every single year from every single resident who's going to, who's, who's going to use the transfer station.
Correct. I, and, and I had, you know, I, I did send something to Nurjan this morning. Maybe I, maybe I didn't send it to him, but I thought I did.
It might not have made it into the packet. We had kind of a crazy day at town hall today, so it just might not have made it in. That's all.
All, all it was, was a revenue expense analysis. You can look at it later for, you know, your education from fiscal '21 through '25.
And how's it looking? Do you want to just tell us about it?
Well, it's pretty, there's a, there's a lot to it. I'll let you know that. In FY '25, we were 40, almost $49,000 in the red.
Yeah.
Well, that's actually what I was going to ask. Is it, is there a deficit? Okay.
Yeah, we've been, we've been going up, the deficit's been going up every year. And it's going to get worse because the, the cost to get rid of trash is averaging about $7 a ton per year.
Okay.
Recycling, I, I have 26 on here too for three months. Right now, we pay $107 a ton to get rid of our trash. Because recycling stuff going to China back, I think it was during COVID, somewhere right around there.
Yeah.
We are now paying $118 a ton to get rid of recycling because it.
So recycling is more expensive than trash?
Yep, yep. And, but it's, it's mandatory that we do it.
Right.
So, you know, that's another thing. And, you know, the, the, the food waste is, you know, it's, it's a great idea. I'm all for it. You know, I, I, I do most of my food waste in my compost pile except for the meat because I don't want to attract animals.
Yeah.
But the, we pay an average of about $170 a ton to get rid of that.
So, Ed, that, Ed, that was $170 a ton for the food? And it was, and it was, and it was 100, like I said, it was $120, $128 a ton for the recycling?
$118.
$118 for.
And $107 for trash.
But it's, but it's a ton, it's a ton, it's a ton.
They're all, it's all by the ton, right?
It's all, yeah.
Yep, yep.
So this will be fascinating. Because I know sustainability is going to be coming before us with the pay-as-you-throw initiative, but it will actually cost the town more to do that.
Right. Ed, Ed, the information you have in front of you or the information you sent us, do you, or do you have a sense, I guess, any one of those three? Has the tonnages, I use that purposely, gone up over the years or are they relatively flat over the years as far as?
They're relatively, they're relatively stable, believe it or not. '23, I'll just do '23, was almost about 800, a little, 810 ton, like, yeah, about 810 ton. FY '24 was 813 tons. We were, we were a little high in '25, it was 850. But right now, I think we're averaging about 800 ton with FY '26. So everything, it is pretty, pretty consistent throughout the years. It's amazing. I guess if the same amount of people are using it yearly.
Yeah.
Are we selling, are we selling this, or giving out the same number of tickets roughly? I mean, not tickets, stickers?
Yeah, it averages around 1,000 a year, somewhere near. You know, I, I'm saying that could be 50 either way.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
But that's pretty much what it is. You know, I don't, I don't have an easy answer. I mean, I know I've been here nine years and, or this is my ninth year. And everything else goes up except for the cost of the sticker.
Well, okay, I'm just going to go there.
Okay, I gotta go now.
No, I, I think we should raise the cost of the sticker. I mean, you know, private hauling has gone up substantially and we haven't. And, you know, Ed and I have had conversations about this. I am not in favor of pay-as-you-throw. I just think that is such a hassle. I would rather increase our sticker commensurate to, to getting close to self-funding. When you tell me we're $49,000 in the red, I don't know that we can use stickers to become self-funding. But.
But my ugly question is, do you start charging seniors?
No, God, no.
Okay.
No. How about that?
I'm asking the question.
I know Mike's, he's looking at all of the fees in town and transfer station is, is one of the bigger ones he's looking at just because of the deficit.
Even if you doubled it, it's half of a private hauler, you know, and you can take whatever you need to take. I don't know, Ed and I have had conversations about it.
Doubling it, doubling it is not half. Private haul is around 800 to $1,000 a year.
Yeah, yeah.
And that's, that's only to get rid of trash and recycling.
Yeah, that's nothing else, yeah.
There's nothing else. You pay to get rid of everything else. And, you know, we don't, we don't charge for anything.
Right. Well, we tried, were you here when we tried that and it was a nightmare? You were here, right?
That was, well, yeah, that was, well, before me.
Okay.
But, yeah, so my, yeah, so they did look at that. I don't know what the results were, but that what Rajan was speaking about. But it will be interesting to see what other towns are doing. But I do know that the towns that my guys work in there is, there is only, you know, the recycling and the, the trash, and then you pay to get rid of other things.
Well, and you also only get one barrel. Like, there's all kinds of, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
All right. Well, we'll have lots of fun conversations because I know there's going to be a lot of opinions about it. But yeah, I'm in favor of just raising the sticker price and reevaluating. And then I, I'm wondering, you know, back in the day when Kathy and I were on the recycling committee together.
We did make money, Kristin.
I know, we did. We made money.
We sorted it. Our, my kids were dumpster divers.
Yeah. Yeah, we had fun.
We made money.
Yeah, no, we had a.
Money enough to pay for all those containers.
Yeah. Yeah. Well, the other thing is, Ed, I was thinking about the food waste. I mean, do we need to see if DEP is giving out composters again? Like, like honestly, I would rather compost in my own backyard than keep it in a bag and take it on Saturday to the transfer station. That sounds horrible. But, you know, again, all of those little initiatives we could do to kind of lighten the load. But at $170 a ton for food waste, yikes.
And that, and that goes up too because, you know, they, it's usually around 3% a year that they, they increase their pickup costs. But, you know, four years ago, FY, five, five years ago, FY '22, we, our, our recycling cost was $3,600 for the year.
Yeah.
And that was when we were actually getting rebates. I think five or six months, we got rebates for the recycling. But that's when we were shipping everything overseas. And so they, so that, you know, the waste management could get rid of it pretty easily. Now it's, you know, it's, it's extremely difficult. And, you know, he does tell me the only way you can get around that is go back to sorting. But that's not going to happen, I don't think.
Right. Ed, the numbers you gave us that were, that you already answered that were relatively flat over the past three years. Do you have that broken down as far as recycling, waste, and food? Because my question is, I'm just thinking, if we get rid, if we get rid of the food waste portion, that's obviously going to increase the weight for the trash.
Yeah, but it's, but it's a ton. And right now, it's, in '23, it was $3,200 to get rid of it for 20 tons. So you can, you can kind of do the math to figure out what the price is. Last year was, I mean, '24, we paid $4,300, 21 tons. This fiscal '25, we paid $5,300 and it's 20, about 28 tons that we, we disposed of.
Yeah, so I, right, right, yeah. It sounds like it's a small amount, though.
Yeah, it's not going to save the budget if we stop doing it.
Well, no, but right, because what I'm saying is, right, exactly. If we get rid of the food waste and therefore people threw their food waste into the trash.
Yeah, it's not, you're not, you're, you're, you'd be saving a little bit of money because you're paying less to get rid of trash, but it's not going to break the bank.
Yeah.
Or, or, or improve the, improve the, the red number.
Hey, Ed, where does our trash go? Like, I know years ago it went to Wheelbrader. Where's it going now? Like, what happens to it?
They, they do, they do the waste to energy.
So it's still being burned at Wheelbrader?
Yep, they're now called wind waste.
Oh, wind waste. Okay.
Yeah.
So it does get turned into energy?
Yeah. I mean, our, our biggest cost, obviously, obviously is trash. We do about 800 to 850 tons a year.
Yeah.
I mean, excuse me, yeah, 850 tons, about $85,000 a year, $90,000 a year. That's just for the trash.
Okay.
But that, but that, if Rajan doesn't have it, I'll resend it. But it's, you know, it's all broken out. Everything from the mattresses to the black earth, to the, to the light bulbs we collect, the East Coast recycling for the electronics, and then the recycling and the solid waste. And I even break down the, the, the open top container that we have for the solid waste where all the wood goes.
Yeah.
And all that, and the compacters. So you can get a good idea of what each one generates.
It's going to be an interesting conversation. Sustainability, you know, being, sustainability versus fiscal responsibility because they're both very important, but it's going to be interesting how we marry it. And, yeah.
They're almost like, they're like, they're almost opposites. They really are.
Yeah, so, well, I guess we'll see what, what the town feels. Okay. All right. But regardless, all right, going back to the original email of the people that saw contractors coming in with three and four trucks dumping out, you've got a handle on that? You know, they're, the guys are making sure no one's, I guess, if I remember right, the complaint was like, there were three vans full of stuff using one person's sticker? I think that was the complaint. No?
That's, I don't, I'm not sure if that was it. It was, he saw contractors throwing wood into the dumpsters, you know, their whole dump truck. And there was a, it was contracts. I mean, we do have contractors that live in town. If they get a sticker, they're allowed to use their truck to bring their own waste to the, to the.
Right.
Transfer station. But that's, you know, that's tough because if people see that, they might say, well, that might not be their own.
Right, I agree. No, Ed, that's, that's what. No, Ed, that's why I guess and I guess my question is, do you think with the with Greg and the new policies and in educating the residents that, you know, it's it's helping as far as being compliant with the town policy and the town laws? Do you think we should we should enforce or tighten up the policy of having a sticker? And what I'm talking about is having a gate or having a police officer or something, you know, I'm just asking for your opinion. Do you think we need to take another step to enforce the policy?
We, you know, we do need something that lets us know whether or not the residents have a sticker at the gate. There's no question because the guys are too busy to check every vehicle because some people don't put them on on their, you know, on their car like the regulations say. So that makes it difficult. So I, you know, I did look into, I got a quote for a gate, and I think Rajan will have that for you after two. That's going to be a lot of work and it's going to be very costly. It's the quote for just an one entrance and having two gates at one entrance because we don't you can't have twenty-foot gates. They they're only twelve feet.
I figured how long it would take to open and close.
Yeah, and it was, I think, I think it was sixty-four thousand dollars.
I think we're better off having an employee like spot checking at the entrance and not letting people in. And I know that's uncomfortable. I I get it.
Yeah, it is. And and the thing is, you know, what what happens when, you know, if you're going to do spot checking during the winter and you you get, you know, say you get a resident that wants to make some money on his taxes? I mean, how long is he going to be able to stand out at the gate?
Yeah.
The winter months without freezing his little tushy out.
Yeah.
Her little tushy. I could be either one, but.
All right. Well, like I said, I know sustainability is going to be coming forward with some ideas, so we'll be chatting. And thank you for hanging in and taking a half an hour to talk to us. It's like, oh, we have Ed. We have to ask all our questions right now because he's here. Any other questions for Ed while he's here?
Just publicly, thank you for your with Greg enforcing it and stepping up the actions that you guys have done. And thank you for working and getting the transfer, not the transfer, the swap shed up and running. And I understand it's shutting down because there's no electricity in right now?
Yeah, they they're they're goals, I guess, were to only be open during the the nice months. So they because there is no electricity in there. And with the difficulty of us having to try to keep that area clean of snow during the winter, it it makes sense. It looks, you know, I stopped in. It looks like, you know, it's a big hit. They're already running out of space.
I'm just going to tell you so. I go on record saying that was nowhere near big enough, but I'm just, you know, told you so.
Yeah, it is. And you know, you wonder, you know, how long do they wait till they start turning the stuff over? Because, you know, if you're getting new stuff, where are you going to put it?
Yeah.
So, you know, if you have this, you don't want to be turning residents away, saying, no, we don't have any room to put in there to put it in there.
Right. Ed, is is there is there a plan to put electricity in there or no?
Not not to my knowledge. That's something you could contact Alec about. He was the one that's was was in charge of doing all that for the committee.
Would it? Obviously, it would cost some money. I mean, would you would you be in favor of it or not? It sounds like you don't want to do it because of the whole plowing situation. I think it's two factors.
Yeah, I, you know, we if we get a lot of snow, we have to have places to push the snow. And if you start taking away the parking spaces they use just so we can we can pile the snow somewhere, it might might feel a little cramped.
Okay.
So that was that was one of the considerations I asked for is that, you know, that might not be the best idea to open, stay open during the winter months, and that they agreed. Kate Kate agreed too.
Great. That's perfect. That's what I wanted to know. Was it just electricity? Was it something else? And it sounds like the snow was a big factor.
Yeah. And I think I think getting people to stay out there and be in the cold.
Yeah, volunteers, volunteers.
Yeah, you know, it's I think it's a tough job for the volunteers as it is. I can't imagine if they have to stand outside for eight hours monitoring the building.
Okay, great. Thanks, Ed.
All right. So we can't ask it about anything else. We only have transfer station on our agenda. Any other questions about the transfer station? Go for it.
Priya, so then I joined at eight fifty.
Yeah, I got you.
You got it. All right. Couple of things. One is to check every every sticker, right? It's going to be impossible because having handed out flyers, there are four or five cars coming in at like different bays, right? So it's it's not going to be.
Well, that's what we talked about gate. Yeah, do it at the gate, but then the gate's, yeah, yeah.
The other piece is like having a police officer, and that's additional cost. So we just want to be careful about that. So it's way too expensive for that. And in terms of the swap shed, regardless of how big we go, we will fill it up. So I don't think it it matters. And.
Well, you can swap more if it's bigger. Well, no, they overflowed the first weekend. I know it overflowed the week. That was it's nowhere near big enough, but whatever. Like, every other town has forty foot. We have what, sixteen?
But we also don't have much. I think that's the correct space, though. Like, if you think about, like, if you have been there, like, when when you, the past couple of weeks when I saw, between the cars being parked and stuff outside, it's, I don't think we, if we had anything bigger, it'll be even more space and there won't be any way for the cars to get out. So.
Yeah, yeah. All good input. All right. Thanks, Ed. We appreciate it.
Appreciate it very much, buddy.
Okay, anything I can do to help, let me know. If you need more information too, let me know.
Oh, we'll be talking about snow soon. You can look forward to that. Yay. Oh, we're Connecticut now. We don't get snow. Yeah.
What, Ed?
What, Ed?
Yeah, I'm not. Yeah, I'm not. I'm not plowing this year.
What a loss.
Okay.
We need the snow. We have to drive.
Good night. Okay, moving right along. We are actually going to table or pass over special town meeting, rescheduling and the ballot question because we don't know if Blanchard is available yet. So, Priya, do you want just from the fire station building committee? I do. We haven't even talked about all the dates that you texted me. So if you want to kind of go through that, that would be great. Thanks.
So I know Rajan reached out today, right?
We just haven't heard back yet.
Okay, so the the date that everybody felt comfortable that we will have all the information that we need and ready would be for March ninth, Monday, March ninth town meeting. If we have to go for that Monday, March ninth, then we need to have the final language ready by December eighteenth. And January fifteenth, we need to have the recommendations. January thirtieth, it needs to go to print. February nineteenth, it'll be in the mail. The other backup date that we thought about was February twenty-fourth, Tuesday, or the February twenty-fifth, Wednesday. The reason we went with the Tuesday and a Wednesday was because the week before that was the school vacation week. And we felt like some families might be coming back and folks might be taking time off and coming back on that Monday. So we didn't want to do, oh, example, Bob, yes. So that's why we didn't want to go with that Monday date for the special town meeting. So.
That all makes good sense.
Yeah, so that's.
So for the benefit of the public, can you explain why we're not having December fifteenth town meeting?
We still we have this property X that came became viable, came forward. But we still are, the town is still in negotiations or like working with that property owner. And until we get that and get permission to do some studies with that particular property, we won't be able to get all the information in. And until we get to that level where we get the permission to get the studies in. So given that, we also have Thanksgiving, Christmas, winter break, everything in between. Yeah, so we we felt like it'll be around early January that we will have all the information that we need available. So that'll give us enough of a time to get give our recommendations and then proceed from there. So that's the reason why it got move. We had to move it. We we could have had it earlier in March, but like the moderator was not available. And then there were some dates that I wasn't available. And so it was just
Putting it all together.
Getting everybody.
Oh, the town clerk wasn't available some days. Yeah, so we were just we were.
Yes.
And and for the benefit of anybody tuning in, we also heard people loud and clear at at our fall town meeting that, you know, we're not expecting an oversized crowd, so we will be at Blanchard. So part of that part of the coordination is also figuring out when Blanchard's available. But so we will not be spending the money to be at the Regency for the the winter. We'll call it the Winter Town Meeting. But we do intend to be at the Regency for the annual town meeting.
Oh, is that the zone?
Yeah. Yeah. All right. Anything else? Any other update on that? Okay. All right. So we will, once we know with Blanchard's available, then we'll bring this back at our next meeting, hopefully.
March third is a Monday.
Moving right along. Next up, vote of useful life for departmental equipment. Bob, you want to take, oh, eight fifty-five. We are only six minutes late. That is not bad.
When you skip over to.
Stop it, Sam. We're only six minutes late, Sam.
Kay Potty Pooper.
Sam, you can leave now.
So just for some background on this is a reason we need to bring this forward is it needs an official vote from the Select Board for our bond agency to continue the bonding process for those apparatus that we that were voted at town meeting. So they need a official vote from they need one to read it into the record for the clerk to do that, and then also a vote of the Select Board and the company amendments to continue the bonding process for, I believe it's for the fire truck, the refurbished DPW building and one of the fire apparatus.
Yeah. So so basically, it's almost like an appraisal. They want to know that these this machinery is going to be good as long as we have a loan on it.
Yeah.
Okay.
And then also, yeah, just for the 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 Tomlons that we have, I believe it's for seventeen and ten years for the
Right.
purchase of the vehicle, for the bond process.
Right, right. Okay, okay. Well, the only the only point I'm making is it's highly likely that this dump truck could last longer than the ten years we're going to read into the record. This is purely just to show our bond company that it will be within its useful life. It will it will not be fully depreciated during the time of our loan. I mean, bond is just another name for a loan.
Yeah.
Right, okay. I just want to make sure everyone understands because I don't want people to say, what? The fire truck is only good for seventeen years? Because people will say that.
That's how much more likely it's going to be. Okay, everybody sit down and listen, please. I, the clerk of the Select Board of the Town of Barksboro, Massachusetts, certify that at a meeting of the board held October twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-five, of which meeting all members of the board were duly notified and at a in at which a quorum was present. The following vote was unanimously passed, all of which appears upon the official record of the board in my custody. Do we have to we vote this first or do we read this first?
You have to read it.
You have to read it.
And then we can we can't vote it till you read it.
Because it says voted. That's why I'm just asking.
Well, we voted at town meeting to appropriate the funds for these things. Isn't that what it says?
So voted that the maximum useful life of the following equipment to be financed with the proceeds of the following authorized by the town, but by the vote of the town, oh, you're right, by the
I already read it.
By the vote of the town passed November sixth, two thousand twenty-three, which was Article twelve, is hereby determined pursuant to general law, Chapter forty-four, Chapter seven, comma, one, to be for the project, the fire apparatus. The borrowing amount was five hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars. The maximum term was seventeen years. I further certify that the vote were taken at a meeting open to the public and that no vote was taken in a secret ballot, that a notice stating the place, date and time and agenda for the meeting, which which agenda included the adoption of the above vote, was filed with the town clerk in a copy thereof posted in a manner conspicuously visible to the public at all hours or in on the municipal building that the office of the town clerk is located or evalkable in accordance with the with the alternative method of notice prescribed or approved by the Attorney General as set forth in nine forty Chapter Mass Law ninety, excuse me, twenty-nine point zero three, Subchapter two, Subchapter B, at least forty-eight hours, not including Saturdays and Sundays and legal holidays prior to the meeting of the prior to the time of the meeting and remains so posted at the time of the meeting that no deliberations or decision in con in connection with the subject matter of the vote were taken in executive session, all in accordance with general law, Chapter thirty-eight, Subchapter eighteen through twenty-five, as amended. One, two. I, the clerk of the of the Select Board of the Town of Barksboro, Massachusetts, certify that at a meeting on the board held November twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-five.
October twenty-seventh.
October twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-five, of which meeting all members of the board were duly notified and at which a quorum was present. The following vote was unanimously passed, all of which appears before the official upon the official record of the board in my custody. Voted that the maximum useful life of each item of departmental equipment listed below to be financed with the proceeds of the borrowings authorized by the town passed at the annual town meeting held May twelfth, two thousand twenty-five, is hereby determined pursuant to general law, Chapter forty-four, Subchapter seven, comma, one, to be as follows. For the purpose of the fire truck, one million two hundred thousand dollars is a borrowing amount for the maximum useful life of seventeen years. Second item, DPW truck refurbishing. The amount was a hundred and sixty thousand dollars for a maximum useful life of ten years. I I further certify that the votes were taken at a meeting open to the public, that no vote was taken in secret ballot, that a notice stating the place, time, date and the agenda for the meeting, which the agenda included the adoption of the above votes, was filed with the town clerk in a copy thereof posted in man a conspicuous conspicuously visible to to the public at all hours in or on the municipal building that the office of the town clerk is located or evalkable in accordance with an alternative method of notice prescribed or approved by the Attorney General as set forth in nine hundred in nine hundred and forty Commonwealth Mass 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 Regulation twenty-nine point zero three, comma, two, comma, B, at least forty-eight hours, not including Saturdays, Sundays and legal holidays prior to the time of the meeting and remains so posted at the time of the meeting that no deliberations or this or this decision in connection with the subject matter of this vote were taken in executive session, all in accordance with general law, Chapters thirty-eight, Subchapter eighteen through twenty-five, as amended.
All right. So my understanding is we don't have to take action. Bob just had to read it into the minutes because everything has already been voted. So in case you're wondering what's next, that was your bedtime story. You should be sleeping by now. All you've got to do is sign them and give them back to Rajan.
Can do that.
Okay. Correct? Just making sure. So we are almost at the end of our evening. Reports and announcements. Now, I have to say, I want to start at this end of the table because I'm kind of excited to hear from Priya and Maria on how the community forum just went. Are you prepared to kind of talk about it or do you want to talk about it next week?
Community forum.
Yeah, just your impressions.
If you know, I I wasn't present.
Now, if anybody missed the community forum, it was not recorded this time around, but the Acton's community forum was.
Today's one. Okay.
Yeah, no, I'm talking about, yeah, the one you just came from.
Yeah, okay. I was thinking about the fire station one.
Oh, okay. I was like, wow, you were standing right next to me when you say I wasn't there. I was like, you seemed very engaged. I thought it was. I thought it went well. Priya can kind of correct me on this. This is a community forum for For the reorganization, restructuring, yes. Because everybody's talking about it. So I'm like, why not just start with that? Yep. So I think it was there was a good crowd. Yeah, I counted about like a hundred and ten, hundred and twenty. Probably. Probably shook out to about a hundred people. Yeah. I think the interesting part is they weren't all Blanchard people. We did have a few people that had Miriam because the concern there is their teaching style at that school. And the majority of the options, other than just leave everything the way it is, status quo, which we all know isn't really going to work, merges them into MCT. And so there was a concern about losing that learning style for a lot of kids. That style works much better than a more traditional style. So there were a lot of questions about that. The problem with, and it's not that they're not trying, but, you know, they they're putting out all these options. There's nine options they're putting out. Subsets. Yeah. And they only have so much information they can put out, right? Because they can't really do a deep dive into nine different options, right? So the only thing we know is if we go with option one, which is status quo, we know what what road that leads down. And that's not a sustainable financial model for either town. So so there was a lot of questions about what happens to that learning style. There were a lot of Blanchard parents who were concerned with option five. That's the one I think most people were concerned about. Even even the the Acton parents that were there were concerned with it because option five does grade banning. So it makes a particular school grade one through three and then another school three through six.
another school three through six, and then one school being Blanchard would be pre-K and K. And then the subset of that would be that Blanchard would stay K-six, Parker Damon building would become a, one floor would be like a K-one through three, and then the other one would be three to four, and the same thing would be the boardwalk. The problem is, it's very complicated. There's not a lot of information behind it, because they need to put all these options out, get the feedback from the community, and then go back and kind of whittle it down to three or four options. I think what we heard was, option one isn't an option for the administration. Option five, version one, which makes Blanchard a pre-K, K, was not something in the Blanchard community, because it ruins the community, right? A school is a community K through six, and if you take that out of Boxborough, and it, that would also mean that one school would be one through three, and the other school would be three to six, and it just, how does that, you know, you have a lot of transitions for children that might struggle with transitions.
Teachers.
Right. So, there's, there's, that, there was, the most opposition, I think, was to option five v. one. There was concern about one of the options had sixth graders going to the junior high, so it would be six, seven, eight, but there's no room for them there, so they'd have to get modulars. I'm not sure why that option's still an option, because it makes no sense, because then eventually we just have to rebuild that. Then there was an option to take the eighth graders, put the sixth graders at the junior high, take the eighth graders and put them in to the high school, so you'd have eight through twelve.
Oh, I missed that one.
Again, there was, there was a little bit of resistance to that. Eighth graders should not be around twelfth graders. And I know, they're like, we'll segment them into a certain part of the school. They should not be on the same campus. It is a huge difference. So, there was resistance to that. The last option they didn't talk much about, it's a long-term option, is possibly having somebody else join the region. I think that just is them putting out all the options. I don't think that's a serious look at. They're talking about having it go in front of the school committee November, mid-November, or right in the beginning of December, with, with the options being, you know, whittled down, having listening sessions in January, in which, once they have three to four options, and they have more information. All of the options that included consolidating schools included shutting down the Conant Building. That building, it says on the slides and in all the websites, a seventeen million dollar renovation. Peter Light said tonight, that's probably not correct. It would probably be a fifty million dollar renovation.
I don't know where they got the seventeen million.
Fifty-five-zero.
Fifty-five-zero.
Five-zero.
And that actually made more sense to us, because seventeen million dollars was like the estimate, I think, when I was on the school committee.
I think that's just the HVAC. I actually think that was just to repair their HVAC system.
Maybe, yeah. So, right, so it's a fifty million dollar, what, what, the problem, I think, we're not articulating as the Select, they, they mentioned the tri-board meetings. The parents aren't getting, and it may be because they're not as engaged with our committees as they are with the school committee, because when you have a child K through twelve, that's where your focus is. You know, they're not seeing the consolidation of schools and the saving seven hundred thousand to eight hundred thousand in administrate, administrators, right? If you consolidate schools, you get rid of principals and vice principals and administrative staff. And then the four to five hundred thousand, so about one point three million dollars in savings, that is a year-over-year savings in other specialists and that kind of stuff when you're consolidating. Parents don't understand that, because what they are hearing is we have a four million dollar gap. And what the parents are saying is, well, one point three million doesn't make it worth it. It needs to be a, I think the financial side of it needs to be a little bit broader, so they understand all the implications. That's what I got, Priya. Do you agree with that?
Yes.
That there was, they, they, they don't understand the financial need as well, because they're not getting the broader both sides of the picture, like the Select Board and the Finance Committee are. We're, we're looking at the town's needs and the school's needs. I will say, Tori did a good job explaining there's a need for a DPW building and a real need for a fire station, and how everything's kind of colliding, like the needs, you know, are difficult.
We, we had talked about it offline a little bit. I mean, as you're, as you're talking about helping people understand all the financial ramifications, I still think that perhaps the Acton and the Boxborough Finance Committee should get together to create a model, because I, I think you've got a lot of really brilliant people, that you could put together a model that would show all that. And the reason I'm saying do it with Acton is so that we march forward with the same information, so we're not giving the towns different information.
You're saying have the two finance committees presented to the school committee?
No, no, what I'm saying, well, no, not to present it per se, no, but like, in conjunction with everything going on, because Acton's got to build a DPW building for roughly the same amount of money that we're going to be building a fire station, and they've got other financial constraints going on, that the two finance committees work together to create a financial model, because that's what they do, that they can share with both towns, not just the school committee, but to help people understand.
With the town.
Town, you know, it's just an idea.
It's not a bad idea.
Because otherwise, you're just doing it in a vacuum.
I just, no, I don't disagree. I do think it's difficult to not have the school be part of that conversation, but that's something that you know.
Oh, no, you would, but you create the model, you bring it to the school committee, you know, we have another tri-board, and I, you know, maybe we don't, I don't know. And that, but then it's going to get out, when everyone approves, it's going to get out to the people, so they can understand the money part.
Yeah, I think that's the important part. I think there needs to be a broader understanding of, from, to the parents, a broader explanation to the parents, that this is not just about saving one point three million dollars. It is about, you know, a structural change in the budget that allows the schools to continue to provide the education. And Peter Light said something. He said, this, because somebody asked, is this model working? Is it getting our kids where they need to be? Yes. For fifty years, this model has worked. But now, fifty years later, it's, you know, we can't, we can't finance that model anymore. Neither town can.
Right.
So, how do we make it work in a different model? So, I think it's just important that we get a broader understanding to the parents, and I don't know how we engage them more on the balance between the town and the schools, because they're, they're worried about their kids. I, I get that. When my kids were in elementary school, I didn't really care if, if you told me I needed a fire station, I'd be like, I don't care, we need teachers for my kids. Because that's what, you know, it's, it's really important, and it is sometimes hard to get the bigger picture. So, however you end up doing that, I do think that needs to be communicated a little better from the town side.
Okay. All right. I, um, okay, something, Priya, anything to add to all of that?
No, I, I think, like, but pretty much in, in terms of their nine models, the Model One, standard, like, existing structure, that's not going to work. Model Two is pretty much shifting to, from four to three elementary buildings, but again, they're trying to keep modular, modular buildings and all that for Conant, so that's not going to work either. So, Model Three, again, consolidating to five schools, and Four, pretty similar to that, like, in terms of merging schools, Five is a disaster in my mind, and I, I said that to them. Because think about, like, you're talking about young kids, where they have to, this is the time that they are creating bonds and creating a learning environment where they are going to not be disrupted. To put them pre-K to K, one to three, four to six, and then six to, seven to eight, and then high school, how many times do you switch these kids around?
So, that's five A.
That is emotionally, that's, yeah.
Five B is rational.
Five B is also pretty similar.
No, five, five B keeps, it's actually not, because they stay in the same building.
It keeps them within the buildings.
Yeah.
But there's still transitions.
It's still transitions. There's, Blanchard remains K to six, but Merriam, McCarthy Town is K to three, Merriam four to six, Douglas Gates is K to three, Douglas is K to three, and Gates is four to six. So, it's still.
See, I disagree with that. I'm actually in favor of that one, because their, their bus is the same, it's going to the same building, they're just going from, it's the same as Blanchard, when you go from the kindergarten side of the building to the sixth grade. So, I don't think five B is such a big deal. I have an issue with five A.
Five, yeah, so, and the, but the last one is reorganizing, and I think which will have the biggest impact will be our number six, but I think, I would assume Acton probably will have a lot more issues, because that's consolidating McCarthy Town and Merriam into Parker Damon, and Douglas Gates together as boardwalk, and then Blanchard stays K to six. I think, to me.
It would be, the schools would be consolidated, so we'd end up going from six schools to three schools.
Schools, and that would bring us the most.
But two huge ones in one.
Well, remember, no, we're going from, from six schools to five schools, in three buildings.
Six elementarys. Option six is six schools to three schools.
Three schools.
And two of the schools.
Oh, no, I don't like that one.
Yes, two of the schools would be nine hundred kids each.
Right, yeah.
But can the buildings?
The buildings can, yeah, they're just broken up by floor.
Remember, there's two schools.
Yeah, there's, there's two schools in one building. So, the Broadway School, the Boardwalk School is pre-K, Douglas, Gates.
Yeah.
On floors.
So, they'll all be combined to one.
And then Parker Damon, Parker Damon is the same thing. One floor's Merriam, one floor's.
Okay, McCarthy Town.
McCarthy Town, yeah.
McCarthy Town, thank you.
So, I, I think six will be the most in terms of, but I don't think there will be, I'm not sure how much appetite there is. To me, I would think, like, if we look into three, four, and if you guys think of version two, but, like, I would stick with three, four, and, and see if that's.
So, we'll see, yeah.
Yeah, I think that, like, if we gave people a limited choice with more information in terms of, like, cost, people, and like, how it'll be saved, what are all the different things that'll have to happen, right? Like, I mean, if there are programs in one school, is that going to be transferred to the other school? What are the class sizes? Are we going to keep the teachers? All that information, right?
Yeah.
And plus, what is the savings? I think if you give them less choice, which I guess is what they are trying to do from the survey, but it's just too complicated when you're looking at nine things and saying, what are your top picks? It's, it's like.
I, I'm not going to lie, I, I was trying to do this survey on my phone, it was completely overwhelming.
Yeah.
Your phone is hard, it's easier on your computer.
I have to do it on my laptop.
You've got to do it on your laptop.
That was the one comment we heard over and over again.
Oh, my God, so hard.
You're expecting us to make these decisions in a survey, and it's going to close, and then when it closes, you're going to give us more information. And so, there were a lot of people who wanted to understand, where is, because they had a sustainability chart, like, how do I make this decision on a survey that then closes, and then you guys go off and you pick your four options? There was, they did say there'll be more listening sessions afterwards, so people can then comment on those four options with more information around budget, and the big thing was, how are you going to deal with moving all these kids around?
Well, I also, I was.
Because that's what's going to happen. All of them have Conant closing, except for one.
Because that was my question, are they, are they going to be extending the, the school date, to have double buses, like, you have a session in the morning, then you have a session in the afternoon?
No, there's no talk about that. No, it would be the same thing, I mean, it's the same number of kids going to the same building.
If you get rid of three schools, and maybe that goes back to my question, if you get rid of three schools, you, you down, you go from six to three, and you said the school, the three schools could handle all the kids, but can the buses handle all those kids at the same time?
Four of those, four of those schools are already in the same two buildings.
Right.
So, the busing doesn't really change.
It's just that they're taking the.
All you're doing is getting more, fewer buses coming, actually.
Right, yeah. Because they're taking the two existing schools in a building and consolidating the schools.
Right.
And they are adding, they've got four hundred kids from Conant, that they would need to move to three, three buildings.
New things, yeah.
To make it easier to understand, it would be three buildings.
Okay.
So, all right, couple of things. I heard Peter say that they may be implementing for the next school year. Can it really happen that fast?
I think some of them can, yes. They did say that again tonight, because they're, you know, the budget coming through is, they have an eighteen percent increase just in their insurance, so I think they're looking at, how do you make even next year's budget? They can't take any more big hits, so if they were to consolidate for next year, and he thought that they could, I think it's fast, but they are doing a really good job getting public input.
Yeah, he said by December, he will have a better idea about that, like, how to, like, how kids can be, like, moved around.
Okay.
Yeah.
I, I appreciated what he said to us last week about, we're building pretty granular budgets for each of these options, because that's what I've been hearing from neighbors and other parents, is how can we look at this?
Without.
Which I think it sounds like you heard a lot of.
Oh, yes, yeah, yeah.
There's just purely not enough information to, to be making informed decisions.
There was one woman who made an interesting comment about how can we in Acton, she was an Acton person, what do we need to do to create more revenue? She was asking the wrong people.
Well, the planning board should have been there.
We were rushing out the front door to try to get here for the fire station building discussion.
Yeah.
So, we didn't get to, I don't even know if she was still there, a few people had left, because it went late, it went until like eight forty-five. And I wanted to reach out to her and say, there's an economic development in Acton, and there's an economic development in Boxborough, and I do think new growth is one of the ways to, at least to take some of the budgetary pressures off. But she was alluding to that, but she was talking to the wrong group of people. I think it's a good idea. She actually wanted to know if the parents should get together and do something. I was like, yes.
I'm sorry, where was she from?
She was from Acton.
She was from Acton.
Okay, a couple of questions, because I, and I could look it up. In your notes, Priya, when does the survey close? How much time do people have to do the survey?
It said, like, sometime mid-November.
Is it next week?
No, next week, it's, it's open for another two weeks, I think, is what they said.
All right. Because I'm thinking that we should all be getting it, because my concern, when I was sitting there, and I was looking at ninety percent were people with kids, what was missing is the cohort that's here. Sam, you've still got kids, the rest of us do not have kids in the school system, and we're the ones that, you know, that's actually, Acton said what? What? Well, no, we need to.
No, I'm laughing, I'm, I'm not a constituency of more than myself, but my wife was upset not to be able to have gone tonight, because, because I'm here.
Because you were here, sorry. I'm sorry. No, but I am thinking there's a, that probably forty to fifty percent of the population needs to be touched in a different way, because it makes sure that they even know this is happening, and, and that they don't get overwhelmed, because it is really easy to get overwhelmed really fast, so.
I think, I think parents feel like it's being pushed pretty hard and pretty fast, and like, holy smokes.
Well, a lot, a lot of, a lot of parents have taken it upon themselves to grassroots it, but what I'm saying is, I don't know that there's grassroots for our generation.
I think that the school committee, it would behoove the school committee, and I'll tell them this myself, to explain, or maybe the finance committees should do this, explain what is the urgency, explain why there's not really a choice but to.
I think Peter tried to do that tonight.
A lot of expedience, it sounds like it, but.
Did you, did you get that impression, Priya? And I think Peter tried to talk about that tonight, he, he tried to explain it. I mean, basically, he said, you know, with an eighteen percent increase in insurance that eats up three percent increase in their budget, just about, not entirely, but just about.
And Tori, Tori touched on it last week.
Yeah, but she, he said it last night, tonight, to the parents, two and a half percent is what we can go up with a little bit of growth, so we can go up three percent in each town-ish unless we do an override. Um, the only thing, and, and so he did say that, he said, this has become an imperative at Boxborough, probably will need an override. The thing that scares me a little bit is, um, I don't think that the parents, and there were some Boxborough parents, and we need to get parents to understand this, that they are twenty, let's say, and I think I'm being kind of liberal with this number, twenty-five percent of the population has children in schools. I actually think it's probably closer to twenty percent. But eighty percent don't. And so I think what, it's really hard, because I had the same issue with my kids when we were doing the override twenty years ago, um, well, what do you mean the override isn't going to pass? Of course it's going to pass. Why wouldn't it pass? And I, and I heard that a little bit tonight, like, we just go for an override, it, it's just not so simple, and I think there needs to be a way to better explain. It goes back to explaining the bigger picture and why an override may not pass, because seventy-five percent of our voters don't have children in the schools, and you need to explain to them why they would want to do this override.
You know what I might suggest is since we are having a March town meeting, that you do, um, talk to Dennis about whether it's a sense of the meeting or whatever, that, that you use that as an educational opportunity about what an override is and why we need it, because you will have four hundred people sitting in the audience. Just an idea.
Oh, the Fincome?
Yeah, yeah, if you have something, or if, if Dennis allows you to do a presentation within, and, you know what I mean? Like, I, I think there's justification for doing it there because a lot of people are watching it at home, they're, they're there, it's a, and, not for nothing, when my partner was watching us on TV, because he's not a resident here, he said, I saw an awful lot of bald heads, do any people with children go to town meeting? And I said, well, not this one, but usually, next one they will. So, so again, you know, you're going to get, get the group you need to go. So, okay. Anything else about, about tonight's meeting? Moving right along, any fire station building committee updates?
No.
While you're, well, because you kind of already did it, right, with the town meeting and everything, yes. Sam, what have you got?
I'm good.
You're good. Bob, what do you have?
It's only been a week.
I know, I know, like, what's happened in the last week? Yeah.
Um, just a couple of things. The first one was, I just want to thank, thank, and I hope everyone was able to do the truck or treat at the fire station yesterday.